This meeting of the Margate City Planning Board, Thursday, October 31st. What? I have to open the meeting before we do the flag salute. Did I say that out loud? This meeting of the Margate City Planning Board for Thursday, August 31st, 2023 is called to order. Mr. Cristaldi? Would you ask people to rise for the flag salute, please? Roll call, please.
Tom Collins.
Yeah.
Richard Patterson.
Here.
Michael Cristaldi.
Here.
Jim Gallantino.
Here.
Margaret Guber-Nolte.
Here.
Craig Palmisano.
Here.
Michael Richman.
Here.
Stephen Giuseppe.
Here.
Michael Ruffio.
Here.
Andrew Campbell. Absent is Remy Pelosi.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press, and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form, which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. I'd like, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of July 27th, 2023.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions, number 31, 2023, William and Gail Levering, number 32, 2023, Jonathan and Dawn Klein, and number 33, 2023, Aaron and Chitra.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any announcements before we start?
No, I don't have any, no announcements. As far as I know, all.
Okay.
All of the applications are going forward.
They're on.
Mine is. Is it plugged in? Should it plug in?
Red light.
There's all down there.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. First case, Neil and Carol Cohen, 107 North Monroe Avenue, block 330, lot 399, located in the multifamily zoning district, seeking sea variance relief for lot area, lot width, pool equipment setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, minimum roof pitch, and possibly others to construct a new pool. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan, please be sworn in.
All right, Mr. McLarnan, please raise your right hand. Do you swear the testimony you'll give throughout this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. The application of Neil and Carol Cohen, 107 North Monroe Avenue, block 330, lot 399, located in the multifamily or MF zone, seeking sea variances, planning and zoning and engineering report. The background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of City Margate in order to construct a new single-family home in the MF zone that is more narrow than permitted, but not unusual for the zone. Several renderings have been revised based on preliminary comments, however, additional issues not identified by the architect still exist and will be discussed in further detail within this report. It is advised that the architect become better familiar with some of the land use ordinances and the flood damage prevention ordinance described in the report. So this is a hardship variance based on the lot width, where required lot width is 40 feet. They, they only have 25 feet to work with. It's also predominantly a substantial benefit variance. Zoning chart is on page two, and highlighted in gray or yellow, depends on the color, is the variances required. Continue on page three, then section two of the documents reviewed, and the plans received to formulate the report. And before I go over to variances, I do want to mention that it's my understanding that the plans will be revised, I want to say somewhat substantially, to be in more conformance with what is permitted to be at this lot. So I'll, I'll go through the variances that I've identified based on the plans and submission that I've received and that you have in front of you. Minimum front yard setback to the principal structure, whereas prevailing front yard setback required is 18.97 feet. Let's say 19 feet. And 16.3 feet is proposed. Minimum side yard setback on the right and minimum side yard setbacks on the left, whereas the minimum side yard setback for lots less than 40 feet wide is five feet, and 3.08 feet is proposed on both sides, the right and the left. So that's two separate variances. Minimum rear yard setback, whereas the minimum rear yard setback is 20 feet, and 15.875 feet is proposed to the first and second floor deck. So that's variances four and five. Again, the ordinance says any, any deck that's over 18 inches from the grade has to meet the building setback, so that creates these two variances. Building height, whereas the maximum permitted building height is 30 feet above nine feet from grade, and 29.11 feet or 30 feet from 10 feet is proposed. Again, I, I believe that variance will be eliminated or adjusted altogether. Swimming, swimming pool clearance, whereas the minimum required clearance around a swimming pool is three feet, and less than three feet is proposed as there is, is a three-foot tall planter encroaching in that three-foot clear zone. Exterior shower enclosure setback, whereas the minimum required setback to the property line is three feet and zero feet is proposed. No waivers have been requested. Instead of going through all my comments, my suggestion would be that the applicant start his testimony and describe what change will, will be made, so that can, we can adjust the report at some other point in time or continue on, but I will turn it over to Mr. Goldstein at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. McLarnan, Mr. Chairman, Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicants. Roger is correct with regard to some fairly significant changes that have occurred to the plans. And because of the changes, because Mr. Barnhart was brought in to look at the plans and kind of make them more what Margate will accept, we do have a lot of variances that have since dropped off. So when we started down this road, it was back in April, and Roger and I went over the plans fairly often, and they were a little bit aggressive with regard to the site. And iteration after iteration kind of narrowed down the variances we were seeking, but even up until about a week or so ago, the variances were fairly substantial. And Roger's report is accurate. He does point out that there could have been perhaps a little bit better involvement by the architect, which we just recently obtained, but John came in and kind of showed us what could or could not occur. So with regard to tonight's application, what we're asking for are side yard setbacks, front and rear setbacks only. The height will comply, landscaping will comply. The pool is being removed in its entirety, so there are no water features, there is no pool equipment. And respectfully to the architect and to the property owners, they wanted something very special. They have a small lot, and I think they just overdid the design, and you can really overthink it. And luckily for them, and for me and John, this board has approved homes on 25-foot-wide lot house, on 25-foot-wide lots, and the homes have come out great. We've actually shown the applicant some of those examples, because the board has some specifics that it needs handled with regard to these applications. Not the least of which is access from the front to the rear. So I know, Mr. Palmisano, this is a big deal for you. There was a blockage with an outdoor shower that would have prevented emergency personnel from getting from the front to the rear. That's been eliminated in its entirety. There is enough room, three feet on each side, to get in and out of the backyard, but we still need side yard setbacks and front and rear. So having said that, Mr. Manos, I'm going to have John sworn in.
Okay.
Again, everything else will comply. We're seeking now front and rear and sides, and everything else that Roger noticed is now going to comply, as John will let us know, so. John, if you don't mind, get sworn in, we'll have you qualified as an expert.
Sure, Mr. Barnhart, just your name and business address for the record, please.
John Barnhart, 400 North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City.
Please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, and Mr. Barnhart.
Eric, I, I want to bring up something to the board. These, these plans are going to change substantially. I don't feel comfortable even voting on these. Even though it's going to change substantially, I don't want to vote on setbacks, but I don't see the whole set of plans. So I would just, how's the board feeling? You think we should go ahead?
I feel I'd need a lot of time to study them.
I, I, I really don't feel comfortable on what you're going to propose approving any variances.
Let me just, Mon, Rich, I understand your comment. The one thing I will say to that is that the only thing that's changing is things are being eliminated from the plan. The building as it sits, it will be, is proposed exactly where it shows on the plan. We're just eliminating a lot of things in order to eliminate the variances. I, but I, having said that, I understand your comment.
I, yeah. I mean, it's as if you came in and said, this is the house we're going to build, but you can't see it, and I don't feel comfortable, and I just saw enough members of the board that don't feel comfortable, so I, I would suggest that you let us see the plans and come back.
What I would ask is to not have to renotice and readvertise, because the plans won't be any different, other than there'll be less stuff on them, so.
As long as what, the, the notice that you have now is sufficient to accurately describe the amended plans, and it sounds like it would be.
It is, it's mostly eliminating other variances, so.
Yeah, it says two months, that's fine.
Yeah.
So you never finished swearing in John on this, right?
No, I didn't get you sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Barnhart, do you swear any testimony? You know, I thi- think I did swear, yeah, but once again.
I think I got to my address, that was.
All right, do you swear from the testimony you're going to give throughout this evening will be the truth?
I do.
And we know you're a licensed planner and engineer.
Licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
In New Jersey?
In New Jersey.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
So.
No notice.
No notice in readvertising, and the board would just like to see the revisions eliminating the other variances.
We'd like to see the plans that are going to be there, yes, please.
Okay.
So, real quick, I see that the only real change would be on the site plan then, correct?
That would be correct. The rendering shows the, the one of the renderings show the, the shower, but, but yes.
We know that's going to be.
The only real change would be the site plan sheet, elimination of site elements, essentially.
So my suggestion would be just to submit those plans, that sheet, instead of everything.
Yeah, it's easier, so thank you.
Yeah.
What about the, the height variance?
We're not requesting a height variance. That, we are, we, that has been eliminated, that's one of the things that have been eliminated.
Right.
Well, again, I think we could probably work with that with a proper grading plan. That can kind of leave things where they are, but eliminate the variance.
Agreed, because you're going to have to elevate, elevate the rear yard in order to get the, get the water out, correct?
And I've received a lot of calls from neighbors of concern about the drainage there, so. I think that should be part of the re-submission, too.
That'll help you.
All right.
Okay.
All right, well, I need, I just formally need this to make an announcement. September, what?
28th.
28th. So if anyone's here on this application, it's going to be adjourned and heard on September 28th, 2023, 6:30 PM in this room. This is your announcement. The applicant will not be required to renotice or republish.
All right.
We're not hearing the case.
I, I, I think what might make sense, if, if, well, Mr. Goldstein's got another application, I was going to say.
If you want to hang around to talk to Mr. Goldstein, you can ask him.
The applicants are here, too. I mean, they can certainly talk to the applicant who are here.
Yeah. Come back next month, and you'll have, you can say anything you want.
Next case is Robert and Cheryl Jacobs, 226 North Belmont Avenue, block 502.01, lot 50, located in the S30 zoning district, seeking sea variance relief from front yard setback, side yard setback, and possibly others to construct a new flood-compliant, single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The report is based on the application of Robert and Cheryl Jacobs, 226 North Belmont Drive, block 502.01, lot 50, located in the S30 zoning district. FEMA elevation of elevation eight. This is a sea, seeking sea variances, planning and zoning report, incomplete. It's a hardship variance and substantial benefit variance. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new flood-compliant dwelling in the city of Margate in a lot with a, an unusual shape, which contributes is, contributes to the variance. The corner lot in the corner is in quotations, and I'll describe that later on, has the same front, front yard setback requirements as it is in the same street and same block, meeting the definition of the requirements for front yard setbacks. The combined side yard setbacks are not being met, and the shape of the lot is a contributing factor. Zoning chart on page two indicates two variances being sought. I believe there are two additional ones on the plans, but actually they comply fully. Document reviewed and remainder of the zoning chart on page three. Waivers, no waivers have been requested, variances required. When is the side yard setback principal structure on the right, whereas the required minimum side yard setback to principal structures is 10 feet, and 8.25 feet is proposed? And the combined side yard setback for principal structure, whereas the required minimum combined side yard setback to principal structures is 37% of the lot width, or a maximum of 22 feet, which this would be 22 feet, and 18.5 feet is proposed. By definition, in the city's ordinance, a corner lot is a parcel of land either at the junction of and abutting on two or more intersecting streets, or abutting a single street at the point where the road tangent deflects by more than 45 degrees. It turns out that the deflection based on the bearings and distances provided is exactly 45 degrees, so it is not considered a corner lot. However, it leaves three sides, so a, a rear yard can't be contiguous with a front yard, so there's two side yards and one front yard, hence why we have two side yard setback requirements for this unique shape of property. The property adjacent to it on Belmont Drive has four sides, so it would have a front yard setback, two sides, and a rear. So that's why this, this is skewed. So the zoning analysis concluded that the fairest, fairest treatment was one front yard and two side yards, three-sided building or lots. Front yard setback requirements have been met on, like the plan shown. We have, and the architect and surveyor have been working together on this plan for several months, and that's, I'd say, became December, we started talking about it. And that's why we arrived at this decision, decision and identification of the variance as shown. Again, it's, it's pretty basic application. There's, the normal stuff is install a tree trees and a governor strip on all fronts, so I think there's enough room for four trees. The condition of any approval shall be on the applicant receiving all required permits, which is standard protocol anyway. And that concludes my report at this time, thank you.
Was that a condition on the governor strip and trees?
I, yeah, technically, there's not two fronts, because it's one front.
Right.
It's 45 degrees, but there's enough room for four trees.
But it's a condition they put the governor strip in?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And the trees.
All right, Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McLarnan. Just also by way of information, this is a raise, it's not a brand-new house. I think we said brand-new house. This is actually a raise. So it's a raise within a beautiful raise, but we'll talk about that in a second. So Roger's correct, this is another one where the iteration of the plans was several times over to get it to where we are now. It is one of the more unusual shaped lots in town. We don't have too many of these, which is probably good, but Roger's right, we measured this, I didn't measure, but smarter people did, and it's exactly 45 degrees, so everything he said is correct. It's almost like an SAT question, you've got one front, three sides, but the next door has three sides and no front. So we're going to walk through all that very quickly, but just wanted to make that note. So, Mr. DeAngelo, would you please be sworn by Mr. Manos?
Sure, Mr. DeAngelo, just your name and business address for the record, please.
Anthony DeAngelo, Studio One Architects, 2123 Boone Drive.
And please, that's okay.
Thank you.
So we got Anthony DeAngelo, please raise your right hand. You swear from the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask one question first?
Yes.
We're not going to postpone the case. So are these variance, previous nonconforming, or they're not?
Who's existing, they're adding on, they're creating?
Yeah, we're adding on.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, it was. Yes, correct.
Okay. Because when it says proposed structure on the.
It would be great not, not to have to come in on, but we are enlarged, so we know.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
And we've gone through again, Roger says.
You can just make sure he gets qualified.
Mr. DeAngelo, just before we get to Farfield, can you just give the board your qualifications, so they can qualify you as an expert here?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 1994, so there's 29 years, do the math.
Mr. Chairman.
Have you appeared before this board, or?
No, I haven't.
It will accept your qualifications.
Thank you. Flip back to our, our drawing, which is C, C2, you may have there. It shows the existing site plan, as described, we're on a corner, and this is, you can see the, the odd shape with the angle, and there's photographs of the existing house. It's a one-and-a-half-story cape. So that, as, as was discussed, we are going to lift the house up above flood elevation, as well as add around the house. So this gives you the context of what exists. On our drawing C1, this is the proposed site plan, and as was mentioned, you can see we're maintaining the 10-foot, the 10-foot setback to the porch as we wrap around on the front of the property, as well as maintain the 15-foot, 1-inch setback to the building itself.
On. While, while you're right there on the driveway, the driveway can be 18 feet wide, can't be 20 feet.
Okay. No, it isn't.
Okay.
So on our drawing where we say side yard A, for purposes of, of this discussion, the setback is 10 foot, 3 inches to the, to the garage. So we comply over here. Side yard B, which is what we're requesting the, the variance for, is 8 foot, 3 inches versus the 10-foot required. As well as, as was mentioned, the combined setback of these two equals 18 foot, 18.5 feet, and the requirement is 22 feet. So we're looking for variance for the combined side yard setback, so.
Mr. DeAngelo, with regard to the raise itself, we're going to raise the house over the appropriate base flood. Margate has a requirement that has a little extra speed work. We're going to comply once the house is up with all of the raised levels, correct?
Yes, and the, and the height will comply as well.
And Mr. Gallantino, who's the flood plain manager, I'm sure, will confirm that, but everything will comply with the exception of the one side yard setback, which we're calling Roger's report, the right, and because the other one does comply, but we're so short on the one side, we're short by 3.5 feet total.
That's correct.
And based upon your design of the house, based upon your experience as an expert in the field of market studies, do you see any negative that could be associated with this design of the board with great variances?
No, I don't.
And the lot's pretty big, right? How, what's the actual square footage of the lot? Because I think it's twice as big as it needs to be.
The lot's square footage is 6,753 square feet.
And we need 3,000.
3,000 is what the minimum requirement is.
Okay. And based upon the size of the lot, do you feel like you've designed the house in an appropriate way, so it's not either too small or too big on the lot?
Yes, I do.
To the extent, we talked about the positive and the negative, you said there was no negative. Would the positives greatly outweigh any negative if, in fact, someone would say, this design isn't negative at, at any level?
I, I don't believe so. I think it will be a positive.
The positives would outweigh.
Would outweigh the negatives, yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is a raise, it's a little bit of an addition, of course, but we do feel like all the other aspects of the municipal land use law are met. This is one where we really have an odd-shaped lot. The architect and the property owners have worked on this continuously to try to get to a plan that works, and Roger was greatly helpful, of course, because it has been going on for so long. So I would rest, based upon the ability to call.
Mr. Goldstein, quick question for you.
Sure.
You're asking for some variances, substantial hardship, but we're not seeing any elevations. We don't even know what this thing's going to look like. So, and it's not so much that we don't understand the prints, because almost everybody up here can read all the prints, that's not. It's the point of conceptually us seeing it and what it, how it tailors to the neighborhood. You know what I'm saying? If you share us the look of the porch. Well, I, I mean, I, we don't, we don't have any elevations as part of the submission, but as I mentioned before, we would be meeting all the requirements for raising it to the proper elevation above flood, as well as maintaining the overall height.
So the issue, Mr. Collins, is they have really, the, the property owners haven't really picked out exactly what they want the exterior to look like. It's not going to look like it looks now, of course. So I think that's still in the works, but with what we've got submitted, we do feel like we meet the MLUL, but it's, look, obviously, they want the board to be satisfied with what we're putting on.
When you're making a decision, you'd like to see a picture of what's going on, just the, the.
Understood.
And then you want to come back, and you might see some monstrosity that wouldn't fit in anything.
I do understand.
It's not a fact that you're being a bad man for it, or that it has to be, but it sure helps me when I'm making a decision as to what I'm approving.
May I have a moment?
And while you're doing that, Mr. Patterson, you mentioned that driveway can't be 20 feet. You're talking about a curb cut?
Yeah.
Not on the way.
No, 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 the curb cut has to be 18, he agreed the change. Yeah, yeah. 20 feet would be nice. Well, we're old. Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah.
Do you want to hear a different opinion?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to hear a different opinion?
I'll listen to anything the board has to say. I'm here at your pleasure, so sure.
Tom and I have been agreeing for so long that this, I just can't let it continue. I see a distinct difference between this and the prior case. I, it, it's not a site plan, we would have to really see it. It's the facade of the house, I, I really, I'm disappointed that it's not there, but I, I really don't think with this minor change, you've got all that useless land that you can't do anything with, which forces you to go back a couple feet. In, in this particular case, I would give it a pass. Again, you got to have the whole board to do it all, but I want to.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I obviously appreciate Mr. Collins' position, but I don't want to get a no vote, because we didn't submit something.
No, no, I, I understand, but I, I don't think, I don't think this is a case that we would do. Well, you come before us again, bring some elevations, but you, you didn't know at this point, and
That whole back section where you need the side yard variance, it's only one floor?
Yes. I'll show you the second floor plan here. You can see, you can see the house is set back off of the lower level. You can see we have pitch roofs over that lower section, which is one story. So, we did pull back.
That's, that's a big thing.
Yeah. We would see that, we would see that in the elevation.
And also in the front, you can see this is the roof over the porch, pitch roof with scanning seam at the curvature, which is the main entrance.
But, yeah, all that would have helped us.
Yeah.
I mean, I like your explanation, but that's the kind of things that, why the issues are raised.
And what's the, first, the top of the first floor elevation?
What's the elevation of the finished first floor?
Well, we have a 12-foot BFE.
12-foot, right, elevation 12.
What's the, what's the...
Right, no.
What's the grade elevation?
As I show on the plans, it's a...
We have on our drawing elevation...
It's 12-foot BFE, but that's not 12-foot off the ground. That's base line elevation.
Yeah. So...
Big crawl space.
Yeah, it's approximately, grade elevation at the front.
Obviously, if they go higher than 30 feet, I kick it back here.
And the house is going to 12.
They don't want to run that.
And so, we're going to be up, our first floor will be four feet up from that grade elevation.
Steve, did you hear that? Four feet from grade.
Four feet or five feet?
Um...
If you're going to be, if the first floor's going to be at 12, and the grade's at 7, that's five feet, right?
Eight, eight and three.
2.7 is...
No, it's, sorry, I took the wrong dimension. The four feet's not from elevation eight. That was from grade. So, it is actually, grade elevation would, it would be 11, would be to the elevation of BFE. So, it's four feet from grade, but three feet above elevation eight.
So, what is the height of the, from the ground to the first floor, what happens?
Four feet.
From the ground to the first floor, four feet.
Four feet.
Yeah.
Is it 88 to Adam or 29?
Yeah, it's 88. It's kind of 88. And so, yeah, so we're doing, you're raising a house, but you're not doing the, obviously, we're not parking underneath.
Right, right, right.
So, you're only going four feet from the grade.
Correct.
Sure, although, all those new houses in that neighborhood are at least four feet off the grade.
Mr. Rich, you're right.
Some of them are not parking underneath.
Yeah, no, we're not parking underneath.
I know, right. That's what I'm saying. But, yeah, so in the neighborhood, there's other houses that are going to be a lot that are already higher than this.
That's the finished floor, the floor height.
So, I'm kind of in, I agree with Rich. I, you know, I mean, we approve, like, site plans for things that are no floor plan or anything.
Well, if there's any discrepancies, when it comes to me, they come back.
Right.
It looks like it's 7.5. I can't read, I have glasses. Can you read that number?
I mean, the other point of the story is, like, can I speak a bit in here, guys?
Craig?
The other point of the story is, I mean, you got, almost a 6,000-square-foot lot, and the only coverage is only 2,000 square feet, right? I mean, that's good. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's big.
So, it's not Patterson versus you and me?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think, based on what the questions that have been asked, and it's always good to have the clients here. They're in the front row. We're comfortable proceeding, and we thank you for everybody having their input, of course. And we'll answer more questions as need be, but we're comfortable going forward.
Anything else on the board? And can I just remind the board, when testimony's happening, if you would please, if you're going to talk, just whisper. It's getting louder and louder, and we can't hear anything, and especially the tape. You can't hear when more than one person's talking. It's easy to whisper to the person next to you. Anything else on the board? Anyone here from the public have any questions, comments? Public portion's closed? Who are you?
Okay. Eric, you're good with the four trees and the governor strip? Okay, so, we'll need a motion in a second for the following two C variances. There's the side yard setback to the house on the right side. 8.25 feet's proposed, tends to the requirement, and then the combined side yard setback, 18.5 is proposed, and 22 is the requirement. The conditions, I noted, they'll provide the governor strip with four street trees. The curb cut shown on the plans is 20 feet, but that'll be 18 feet. And then we'll note any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report. The applicant will comply with any other representations it made during the course of the hearing, and they'll submit revised plans consistent with an approval if granted.
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Eric, you got lucky here, because if anything meets the corner definition of a hardship, this is definitely it, because you don't have straight lines. You have angles. So easy, very minor, very de minimis. Wish we could have seen the elevation just so we could appreciate what's going to happen, but you did a good job.
And thank you. I just want to point out, there will be elevations. Once they're done, I'll send them in, and before the house gets built, you'll see them. Well, you'll still see them. Thank you.
Rich Patterson?
Well, I wasn't really disagreeing with Tom, because the questions were good, and it led to the fact of why we would have liked to have seen them, but as far as his vote goes, I just agree with it completely. I vote yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
We're getting another compliant house, which helps our rating. I see no negatives on it. It's, you know, your square footage of the lot as to the house is like, I see no problem with it for the neighborhood or anything. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
I'm just amazed that Rich agrees with Tom.
No, we, it's been going on for a while now.
I know, I see that. Congratulations. Due to the fact we're getting a flood compliant house, I agree with the board, and I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Based upon the unique shape of the lot, the variances are de minimis. The positives certainly outweigh the negatives, and we are getting a flood compliant house, so I vote in favor of the applications.
Craig Pomassano?
Yeah, I agree with the other board members. We're asking for a foot here and a foot there on the porch and the building, which is pretty, kind of, de minimis, but I would really like to see some more views of the house and how the porches are taking that one foot here and there. So, in the future, I appreciate, maybe next time we might not vote on it next time. Eric, I approve.
Steven Giuseppe?
Yeah, the fact that you're raising the house and you're saving the house, I like that idea. It would, does help to see the older house superposed over this, so we have a better description of it. And the fact that you're keeping the house, I don't think that the, the variances are bad. So, I approve.
Michael Raffiu?
I agree with the other board members, and the unique shape of the lot, the variances are de minimis. I don't have much to add. I vote yes on this.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Collins brought up a good point, and a couple other board members. In the future, you know, you do a lot of work on the board, and maybe, you know, we should, you know, say something. When people come in with plans like this, at least some type of elevation, that's what we're looking at. But, that being said, I think the positives best outweigh the negatives, and I'm going to vote yes.
Motion carries nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Next case is Todd Perry, 109A, South Sumner Avenue, Block 19, Lot 5.02, located in the S40 zoning district, seeking C variance relief for two curb cuts for off-street parking, building coverage, and possibly others to elevate and renovate an existing single-family dwelling. Taxes?
Okay.
Would you guys take that outside, please? Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. The report is based on the application of the area, 109A, South Sumner Avenue, Block 19, Lot 5.02, located in the S40 zoning district, seeking C variance relief. Planning and zoning report background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the city of Margate to elevate an existing non-flood compliant home high enough to provide parking below the design flood elevation, which is a permitted feature for permitted use by FEMA and NJDEP. The proposal is to elevate one in three feet higher than BFE, which is the maximum height increase for a house lift without triggering variances for all existing non-conformities. The proposal is to elevate to new first-floor elevation of 16.85, and that's the elevation 16.85 distance from the grade, which is 2.85 feet higher than the lowest, highest first-floor required. That's the language from the state law, actually. The ordinance does permit first floor to be nine feet above grade, to permit parking below, which is within the roof height of 39 feet above grade, or elevation 46.8. The proposed roof peak elevation is 47.5, or about nine inches more than what is permitted. This application's been reviewed. Again, this is another application that we spent a lot of time on the last couple weeks, just talking with neighbors, talking with the applicant, talking with the designers. So, what you see in the report is not even close to reflecting the time spent that Eric will vouch for that. So, the zoning chart is on page two, highlighting the variances required. Again, continued on page three, also the documents reviewed. I do want to point out some of the documents reviewed, which were very helpful in formulating this report and having a valid discussion with the applicant, and that's the roof elevation certificate, Paul Kelling, from 2006, flood elevation certificate from Paul Kelling, October 6, 2006, and the survey of premises based on 2006. And the reason I bring those up, it was very helpful in showing, in contrasting what was built and what was permitted in 2006 compared to what we're seeking today. Different datums, everything, so there's a lot of conversions going on. So, I do want to point out the variances required. One is the minimum side yard setback for the principal structure on the right. Again, this is existing non-conforming, and we're going above the BFE plus three. That triggers that variance, whereas the minimum side yard setback is eight feet, 6.93 feet exists, and 6.93 feet is proposed. And there's no elevator. Principal building coverage, whereas the maximum permitted principal building coverage is 35 percent, 34.55 percent exists, and 37 percent is proposed. That's not an existing non-conforming, because that's a new variance. Maximum principal building height, whereas the maximum building height is 30 feet from first floor on BFE plus four for house lifts, 30.67 feet exists, and 30.67 feet is proposed. Again, it's the prior starting point versus the final starting point. It's not the height, it's the 2.85 feet in the middle that's creating the variance at the top. So, again, that's NJ 58 column 16A dash 103, creating the C variances. Curb cuts, number, whereas the number, maximum number of curb cuts is one for residential use, one exists, and two nine-foot-wide curb cuts are proposed. No waivers have been requested. Couple comments. One is the highest applicable flood elevation standard means the new FEMA base flood elevation plus an additional three feet, or any applicable flood elevation standard required pursuant to NJAC, 7 column 13 dash 1.18 secant, and as adopted by the Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the Flood Hazard Area Control Act, public law of 1962. And again, I already quoted the prior, whichever's higher. The minimum side yard setback of eight feet is an existing non-conforming setback being expanded vertically. That's required to be six, eight feet, but it's 6.93 feet. They listed the combined side yard setback as a variance because it's off by 1 one-hundredth of a foot. I disagree with that, because the ordinance does provide a provision of four-inch cladding. So, that measurement was taken after the cladding was applied back in 2006. In my opinion, if you can get it to 1 one-hundredth of a foot, you're pretty good. The zoning chart mentions Amherst Avenue setbacks. Again, that's just a minor detail I think should be clarified for future use. The house lift to BFE plus three or plus one to first floor would be by right, including height. The city permits building heights to be measured nine feet above grade to permit required parking to first floor at 30 feet of building height. The lowest existing floor is non-habitable. Again, you're going to have to comply with the deed restriction that restricts that ground floor to be only used for entryway, storage, and parking. Six off-street parking spaces seems a little drastic for four bedrooms and to justify two separate curb cuts. I do know the board has taken this stance before, particularly in Beach Block, and again, their argument's going to be you can't use parking the street during the day. Again, that's a valid argument. However, using the front yard as a parking lot is, I don't think, is ideal for Beach Block locations. Again, that's my opinion. Not, existing curb cut shall be removed. All landscape requirements shall be met. Utility locations are shown, but again, that's a, that's a function of construction plans when they're submitted. And again, the garage space needs to be used as garage space, and I just have a feeling that if you have these exterior parking spaces that are supplementing the garage, they're going to be used, and the garage spaces will be used for something else. So, that concludes my report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, Mr. McLaren, Eric Goldstein on behalf of the applicant. Just a couple things to get started. Roger's correct about something here, more than one thing, but in this regard, this report is the result of months of back and forth with the city as well as with the neighbor. I do want to point out, just for the record, that I want to thank and appreciate Mr. Steve Hankin and his associate, Mr. Kevin Ballistieri, who represent the neighbor. Pure gentleman throughout the course of this, along with the neighbor, Mr. Turgeon. I know Mr. Gallantino spoke to the neighbor. My client has been in contact with the neighbor. It's one of those cases where it really is important for everybody to talk before we get into the hearing tonight, because Roger explained to everybody exactly what he just explained. We're really talking about that sandwich in the middle of the house height and then where it's being raised from. There was a little bit of confusion there, but everybody, I think, really understood it very well, and we reached, I think, a very good understanding of as to how we're going forward tonight. So, in that regard, thank you, Roger. Thank you, Jimmy, for talking to the neighbor. And then, of course, even though they're not here, Mr. Hankin and Mr. Ballistieri. We are going back from six to five parking spots. Roger's report, again, very telling. Perrys have children who are getting older. They're, the Perrys are eventually going to move here. Todd's brother, Andy, lives over on Quincy, and they spend a lot of time together, so the Perrys will be here full-time. That garage will be used as a garage. We're going to do non-conversion, and they'll be parking in the garage. The kids are, you know, enough kids to fill up those spots. So, at a minimum, we can make the representation. Not that it means much. I know the board says, doesn't matter down the line, but one spot will be eliminated, and the garage will be used as a garage. Having said all of that, this is a raise. It's to take the property up so we can put the garage underneath. It does create a very minimal height variance, but the variance isn't because the house is bigger, as Roger said, but when the house was built originally, this all preceded Hurricane Sandy. All the standards were different. So, having said that, Bob Lolio's with me. Mr. Manos, you would swear him in. Bob can walk us through the project, and as Roger pointed out, Beach Block parking there is tough. We don't want to jam anybody else, always moving cars in and out. This is the solution we came up with, because there's really no other place to park with this many people that are going to have cars at the house. So, Bob, I'd be sworn in.
Mr. Lolio, just state your name and business address, please.
Robert, Robert Lolio, 219 Bellevue Avenue, Amherst, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And as Roger pointed out, Beach Block parking there is tough. We don't want to jam anybody else, always moving cars in and out. This is the solution we came up with because there's really no other place to park with this many people that are going to have cars at the house. So Bob, um...
Okay. Mr. Lolio, just state your name and business address, please.
Robert Lolio, 219 Bellevue Avenue, Amherst, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
We sure accept this qualification, yeah.
Just ask that question. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. All right, Bob. You prepared the plans a long time ago. We've been working on this for a while. Just by way of background, we actually had to get from the city the original plans that Salerno prepared in 2005 to build this so Bob could figure out how to raise. This has really been quite a project, but I think we're at a good point where we can go forward now. So walk us through what you've designed and what we're planning on doing once the raise occurs.
The existing home was a two-and-a-half-story dwelling below flood elevation, and it was built on a concrete slab. So it was only about two feet off the ground. The intent was to create a garage parking structure below the existing house. So the existing house is pretty much staying the exact same way it was. The only difference is that there was a back porch off the kitchen dining level that we are enclosing on the second floor. So there was a porch back here that's becoming enclosed. That's the only addition to the house. And then there was some porch extension.
So it doesn't extend out past the house line, right?
Not in the rear.
That was all, what's being added is within the...
Correct. It's within the original rectangle.
Yeah.
That was a, that was a porch that's setback into the house. And then the, the front decks, we extended a little bit too, but they still meet all the current requirements. The variance for the building coverage is a result of, we, there used to be, we flipped where the garage was. So the garage used to be on the left-hand side, now it's on the right-hand side. And there used to be a porch in the front of the, in front of the dwelling. So we're removing that porch to create the garage. And what I did was I brought the garage wall of the house forward to align where the original porch was. So that area between the original porch and where the garage was creates the variance for the building coverage requirement. And the others, the other variance was the side yard on the right-hand side. As Roger said, it was eight foot's required, and we're at 6.93 feet. So it's not changing, it's just aligning, and we're creating the eight foot of parking below the house.
And it's a variance, of course, because when we raise it up, that's the extra spot. If we only raised it to the minimum, then we wouldn't need the variance. But here, we do need the variance because we're exacerbating an existing non-conformity, although minimally so, just the house is going up. But it's not getting any closer to the other property. That's the Turchi property closer to the beach. So it's just a straight raise with no expansion out on the beach side. Sorry, Bob, I'll cut you off.
Correct. And then the other variance is the building height variance. So the existing, from first floor to the ridge, the building height stays the same. We're not increasing that, we're just raising the home. We're raising the home from elevation 10 to 16.85.
Could you explain briefly why you switched the garage? Because if you kept it where it was, you could have had one curb cut.
The problem was where the existing elevator in the garage wasn't big enough to include a parking spot.
Okay.
So the elevator was only like 10, 12 feet deep at the time.
Okay.
And, Mr. Patterson, that was part of the original problem. When we first started designing, it was on that side. When we saw how the foundation was originally built, designed back in almost 20 years ago, that was the only way that would have worked for the raise.
Well, that makes sense for the variance, but I wanted to make sure.
And it was like 17.4 feet to the garage existing, so really, I couldn't get a spot inside or outside.
Okay.
This makes the garage usable, basically.
Which parking space are you eliminating?
One of the outdoor spots.
It'll be two deep instead of three deep.
Right.
It'd be the last one.
Not the middle one.
Eric, I got a couple of questions.
Of course.
So we get an ASBILT survey when it's the foundations, the new foundations installed, and then with the top of block to identify the height of the top, the finished first floor. And then a height certification when a home is built that meets the 40, what's it, 40.6 or something?
That is correct.
So can we put that on the record?
Absolutely.
Okay, Chairman?
I just wanted, I also wanted to mention that we took out, we eliminated the front yard to the garage. There was, it was a non-conforming, and now it's conforming. And then the overall total landscape coverage was non-conforming, and we made it conforming.
And now it's more conforming without that third spade or...
It will be...
Nor still, right. And we didn't really talk about this too, too much, but if you have, Roger's report goes through it. But Bob's plan, if you look at the zoning chart, this is a weird one because we need variances, but a lot of the existing non-conformities are actually being removed because of this. So you're getting a better product, even though we still need variances. We need that little bit of a height, we need the curb we need. We're asking for the curb cut, but by doing this, we're eliminating a lot of bad stuff that's already there. So we think the balance, of course, is in the equity of way in favor of the property owner because what they're getting is also what the city gets, a much more compliant house when this is done. Bob, I know you put on your chart up there. Just go through the variances that are being removed as existing non-conformities.
One is the front yard to the garage. The other is going from 57.7 to 58.7. Or that's, it's still good, front yard landscape. But it's a total landscaping coverage, which is going from 34 to 36%.
Plus?
Plus whatever we get back when we remove the other spot.
The other spot, that's right.
Yeah.
So it'd be probably around 37 and a half. The other one, there was a set, the driveway was currently only like 0.57 feet. So that was a variance, and now it's 1.3 feet over. The driveway's not right on the side yard line.
And the new driveway's going to have a grass strip?
Yes.
Now, do you know that you're now allowed to put fake grass in the grass strip?
Yes.
With a, okay, I just, that's brand new.
Years ago, the current owners bought this from the people who built it. I mean, from the people who built it, right. They were not the original owners. We think there might have been a fill-in previously of a grass strip. That wasn't done. Because I asked the client about that, he said, "We had no idea that was even a thing."
Right.
So whoever the house was built for did not, Mr. and Mrs. Perry.
Right.
And then the two, the two curb cuts was a result of we had to split the driveways. I couldn't combine it due to the way that the foyer and elevator worked out. But I was able to maintain 18 feet in between the two driveway spots. So you could park a car in the front of the house.
And, you know, this street is a tough one with parking, of course, because Sumner, 6:00 PM to 10:00 AM, but otherwise, there's no parking there. So I know there's always a question about whether or not there'll be cars parked in the garage. They have to park somewhere in five spots, the number of people in the house will probably all get used. So Bob, in your professional opinion, as an architect in the state of New Jersey, professionally licensed, would you consider there to be any associated with this project based on what we're presenting right now?
No, I don't see any negatives.
I do think there could possibly be some negatives associated with the positives of eliminating existing non-conformity along with raising a house that is currently not flood compliant outweigh any such negatives.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, we, or answer any questions the board has on this one. Bob's help, of course, we've got good elevations, we've got a good site plan, we have good surveys and point gears off. So we'll rest subject to asking...
Any things on the board?
Rich, I have just some comments.
Yeah, go right ahead.
We don't really need to have questions answered.
Go ahead.
But if everybody remembers, when we first decided to elevate the park underneath, goes back to like, I think, Salem Road. And when we did that, we said, "Okay, we'll elevate, put parking underneath." And we made them remove, if you remember, there was four long parking spaces on the side. So as an inducement to the elevation, giving the extra height and the feet, they had to give back grass, air, and open space. We're not doing that here. I don't care if it's Beach Block or middle of the block or wherever. So now you're getting your cake and you're eating it too, okay? This is just commentary permitted, not that. And the bottom line is, is that once we open this door, then everybody's going to come in and, "Wow", and they're going to go to court, and they're going to fight, they're going to say, "Well, we want both."
But it already exists, huh?
But it, it doesn't exist.
It does exist.
It does.
Yeah, it's there.
It does exist. The driveway on the side of the house is already there.
The driveway's there. That's where they park now.
Yeah, it's already there.
Yeah, we're not adding anything.
Okay. But we are giving, we are giving a height variance, or all the variances because of elevating it to flood, and they're going to park underneath.
We're giving a height variance because from the first, finished first floor to the roof is already higher than what it's allowed to be. So they would have to tear the house apart to meet the height variance. So that's...
Unless we didn't let them park underneath and just did it to the regular flight elevation and left the outside parking out there.
Okay.
So I'm just saying, the intent of it when we passed, when we did formulate this thing back years ago, was to give us more air, light, and open space and to get rid of the outside parking. If you were getting inside parking, which they're adding extra inside parking.
And, Mr. Collins, I just want to point out, we did, this is something Bob and I talked about quite a bit. So we are definitely on the same page here. And if this were a new house and not a raise, I think it would be harder to, harder to, I would never, it was harder to...
You wouldn't get it.
But this, and Rich and Mike point this out, it already exists, and we spent a lot of time at the house thinking of ways to make it better. And we thought the elimination of the other variances made it better. But because this is already there, and it's not a straight raise, we're just going to the minimum BFE, we're going a little higher, but everything else is going to remain exactly as it is, plus the give back of one parking spot and more landscaping, which, you know, we only really thought of the additional landscaping of the parking spot after we got Roger's report. We can't say we thought of that initially because then we would have put five spots on the plan and not six. But we think this was the best possible option for the raise. But we do agree that if this were a new construction, the board would never grant that. So I, we, you and I are on the same page now, you and Rich. I agree that that is a concern, but not on a raise.
I do want to point out that the height variance is not a D variance, it's a C. It's less than 10% or two feet.
So that's what we've got. I'll give comments, of course, and, and again, we...
Anything else on the board?
We're all sitting the same way.
Mike, Jim, Drew? Any questions? Steve?
The spot in between two driveways, is that lining up to actually put parking courts?
It is. Yeah.
That's what I thought.
Anyone here from the public have any questions, comments? Other person's closed. Leo, would you read a motion? Would the board listen to Leo as he reads a motion?
We need a motion and a second to grant the following C-variants. There's a side yard setback on the right side of the house. They're at 6.93 feet, eight feet required. Building coverage is 37%, or 35 is the permitted maximum. The height, 30 feet is allowed, and they're at slightly over 30 points, excuse me, 6, 7 feet. And then the curb cuts, they're proposing two nine-foot wide curb cuts, which is not permitted. And the conditions I noted, that the, one of the parking spaces on that left side will, will be eliminated. So they'll go from six total down to five, so that'll be two deep on the side there. And per Mr. Gallantino's comments, they'll provide that height certification in the ASBILT. And then we'll, we'll note any other conditions in Mr. McLarnin's report, and any representations made by the applicant during the course of the hearing. And then the applicant will submit any required revised plans.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Tom Collins?
Under normal circumstances, I probably wouldn't vote for this. The fact that it is Beach Block, the fact that it is pre-existing, and the fact that they're going to 16 feet by the, by the ocean, which in a few years, they're probably going to need. So it's a toughie, but I think we're still getting the light air and open space because the parking will be open and it's existing. So I think it's the minimus, the application, so I vote yes.
Richard Patterson?
I think the, the parking that Tom refers to, the fact that it's pre-existing, I, I don't think that would harm anything going into the future because I agree if it was new, we most likely wouldn't allow something like that. I, I can't find anything in there that, that makes a real big difference. I was concerned about the, why you switched the garage. You had a very good answer for it, it made perfect sense. With a pre-existing house, that's the only way you could do it, and it eliminated some variances. So I see it as a good project overall, and the benefits certainly outweighed the detriments. I vote yes.
Mike Cristal, Cristaldi?
Yeah, I think it is a good project. It's another compliant now. I don't see any negatives on it. No neighbors, any complaining, so I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
Just a mere fact of what just happened this last week with the hurricane that went through Florida. I mean, that was a four-foot surge that came through that one town. And just figure if that happened to us again, we would have a lot of houses that are compliant and meeting the new 2018 FEMA map that we're all abiding by. Just for that alone, I vote yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I agree with the other board members. It's a straight raise. The design, I think it's, you've created a nice design for a straight raise, and it validates the variances which are existing. I think it's a good project, and I vote in favor.
Craig Thomasano?
Well, it's, it's not a teardown. It's rehabbing an older home, and I like that. So it's saving, saving an old home. And there's an 18-foot space remains out front with the two curb cuts. I'm not really one for liking two curb cuts, but in this, in this respect, it works on this house. I agree with the other board members, and I approve.
Stephen Jazekki?
I have to agree with, with everyone else because it is, it is a raise, and there's really not much you can do. If it's a new house, it would be different. After the rain that we saw yesterday, I'm very concerned with the amount of permeable land that we've got to get back into this town, not take away. And you are actually take, putting a little bit of permeable land back, so I approve.
Michael Rafiu?
I, I agree with, with what the other board members have said. I, I think the benefits outweighed any detriment, especially that considering that we're on a Beach Block and the flood height that we're adding, I think, I think it's a good project. I don't see any negatives, and I'm going to vote yes on this.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I'm looking at the zoning chart, and they actually increased the landscape area and by eliminating that extra parking spot, they're going to increase it more. That driveway is existing, because I would say the biggest variance is the two single curb cuts, but you had good reasoning to, you know, slide that over the other way, so I'm going to vote yes.
Motion carries, nine in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Next case is Charlie Canouli and Nikki Luciano, 110 North Madison Avenue, Block 330, Lot 408, located in the multifamily zone district, seeking C-variants relief for side yard setback left, sidebar setback right, total side yard setback and possibly others to construct a new two-and-a-half-story flood-compliant, single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLarnin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is actually a carryover application from the July meeting. The report is based on the application of Charlie Canouli and Nikki Luciano, 108 and 1010, or 110 North Madison Avenue, Block 330, Lot 408. Again, located in a multifamily. Interesting to the other application in a multifamily zone, this, this lot is actually large enough to support two units, and they, they chose to construct one single-family unit. And the lot is large enough to support that. So the zoning chart is on page two, and continued on page three. And if you looked at the report from the prior month, you'll, you'll see a lot more yellow in the first report versus this report. And I, I want to commend the applicant's attorney, the applicant's architect, and the applicants themselves to make some revisions, some substantial revisions to make it more compliant, and what I believe is something that is more desirable for the city and easier to review and possibly approve. in what I believe is something that is more desirable for the city and easier to review and possibly approve. So the document is reviewed on section two on page three, the plan is reviewed and received on, continuing on page three and four. So, I believe we're down from several variances down to two. The two identified variances are minimum side yard setback on the right, whereas a minimum side yard setback for lots 40 feet wide or more is eight feet, and 5.5 feet is proposed. Minimum side yard setback on the left side, whereas minimum side yard setback for lots 40 feet or wider is eight feet and 5.5 feet is proposed. Again, going back to, the existing lot width is 43.33 feet. So, they're pretty close to that requirement of meeting the five-foot setback if they're about three-and-a-half feet shorter in lot width. They'd still be fully compliant with the lot area. So the comments, I'm not going to go through all my comments, everyone's read the report, however, basically, all the prior comments have been satisfied, and the revisions that have been done have satisfied most, if not every single one of the other comments. Again, the cooperation that the applicant has provided is, is very beneficial to the city and, but it, it took a lot of time. The decks in the front and the rear also do not meet the side yard setbacks either, but again, I would apply the side yard setback variances if they're approved to include all decks. And I believe this is modular. Again, the half-story has been reduced to comply with the half-story rule, where the 50 percent of the floor area cannot exceed the floor area of the floor below. And I view that the third floor, there's two bonus rooms. While I, I believe there are going to be two bedrooms, but they will be fully compliant with the parking here regardless. Again, I leave it up to the applicant to discuss that. The recommendations in the plans are, are pretty standard, and I will turn it over to the applicant at this time.
One, one second.
Yes.
How many parking spots are required for seven bedrooms?
No, it would be five.
Five plus two, the two bonus rooms?
I think they included those.
I'm sorry, let me ask Eric, how many bedrooms? Not including the two upstairs, how many bedrooms do you have?
Five total bedrooms.
Not including the two rooms upstairs? Not including upstairs, how many bedrooms do you have? Five?
Five.
So what's the requirements of this?
Well, max is four.
And do they, do they provide four papers? Okay, go ahead.
So, Eric Holstein, on behalf of the applicant, Nikki Luciano and Charlie Canouli, this is, again, and this is the fourth case in a row that I've had this happen, where Roger's involvement early on with the architect and the applicant was extremely important. They submitted plans, they needed to be revised many times over. Roger was hopeful in getting us to get to a product that we're ultimately hopefully going to get approved tonight. It is not a modular, just so we're aware, not that it makes much of the difference, the same, but it's, it's a stick-built house. But a couple of things here that are fairly important. This house is being built not as a spec house, but as the home that Charlie and Nikki will own. And they could, this, and we always talk about properties in multifamilies and say, we're only going to build one house or one, one unit. But a lot of times, we don't have enough square footage to build two. So we're saying we're going to give the board something that you would get anyway, because you couldn't build two. Here, there's almost enough to build three. They're building one, and it's currently a duplex. So we're, we're losing a unit count going down from two to one. The lot itself, 5,400 square feet, so we're more than enough to build two units. Mr. Canouli and Mrs. Luciano are going to live there with their family. We're way under on building coverage, we're 45 is the max, we're at 32.8. But we do need two-and-a-half feet on each side. So, Mr. Whitaker, as Roger is aware, has come here from Virginia. Eight feet's required, we're asking for two-and-a-half on each side. But the setbacks will be five-and-a-half feet. Yeah, where eight's required. But as Roger pointed out, it's fairly small difference if the lot were just a couple of feet narrower, we'd more than meet the setback, so we're really close. Jim? I've been waiting a long time for this. So Mr. Whitaker's here, came up from southern Virginia for this. Seven-hour drive?
Yeah, seven and a half.
All right.
Could you use a microphone, please?
Mr. Mannes will swear you in to talk about credentials and get you started with testimony.
Okay, just your name and address, business address for the record.
My name is James Whitaker, business address is 90 Crescent Lane in Wurts, Virginia.
And Mr. Whitaker, please raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to start and thank Mr. McLaren for all the help that he gave me. I designed up and down the East Coast and it's very difficult to keep a track of all the different regulations. He was a big help, we never met before, but we, you know, went back and forth email to revise the drawings to get to where we're at.
Jim, just for the record, put your qualifications on, please, so Mr. Mannes can accept them.
Forty-seven years in, as a design professional, I've been working with Grayling Johnson, who's the sealed architect. We have a small firm for 30, 32 years. Most recently, I just sat on, I was presenting a 45,000 square foot warehouse. Oh, yeah, we're registered in 17 states.
That's important to put on the record.
Yeah, registered.
You're licensed in Jersey?
I'm licensed in Jersey, but we use Grayling Johnson Seal as a firm.
I know, but you're licensed too.
Yes.
Yes, that's fine, thank you. We'll accept his qualifications.
All right, Jim, I know we waited for this for a while, Roger walked us through the plans, Charlie and Nikki revised them several times over, but now we're going to present, so if you could walk the board through, you reviewed Roger's report, I'm sure, what we're planning on doing here, and, you know, I would say, these are fairly de minimis variances, but we want to put the proofs on and talk about how this product meets the standards for the municipal land use law, along with the multifamily district in the city of Margate, so take it away.
Yeah, when, when we designed the house, we definitely want parking underneath, we wanted an elevator. And the way that, where the lot's located, the best design it was to keep everything, living space on one side, kitchen, sitting areas to give the best views from the, you know, the space. So we kept the elevator on the left side with the stair tower, there was a switchback stair tower to maximize the space inside, the floor space. So then we got into heights, and we were clarified with the elevations of first floor and so forth as we designed through. We've got a center column line with side to side, choice to give us the maximum floor space for the families that are going to be occupying it, that's, was one of the problems. What they, they actually wanted a lot larger, but we, you know, gone back and forth with Mr. McLaren, we came up with this size and this design. So we have two parking spaces on the lower level that are opposite where the current curb cut is. So we're going to restore that curb, and the new curb cut won't be as large, because it's actually just a single car wide, going back into a drive, to the driveway and then into the garage. So there'll be two cars parked inside of the garage and then two on the outside. We have a lot of flower beds and stuff. To the garage door?
On the property line of the garage door. Say, two cars would go there?
Let me just check. It's 33 feet two, actually, from, from the sidewalk, it's a little over 36 feet. From the property line, it's 33 feet two.
You're supposed to have 36. 18 feet for each space.
Well, from the, from the actual sidewalk, we have that. Property line? So we would have to then move the house back, which we do have enough room in the rear setbacks. Two spaces out front, two spaces inside, so you're looking, we need 36 feet out there.
All right, Roger?
Yes, to the property line, yes.
Okay.
So that's got to be adjusted back, and we do have, we have more than enough room for the rear. We need 20, we've got 29 to the deck and 34 to the other deck.
Yeah, so we have room to move it back, I guess, two-and-a-half feet to get 36 feet.
Thanks, Mr. Thomasano, so you'll have two cars outside and two cars inside, for four.
You're proposing to move the building back? Yeah.
Well, the building, the building's not there, it's an empty lot. So we can move the building back on that site plan.
I think alls you have to do is move the garage door in three feet if you.
Okay, we'll indent the door, and we'll push that back, so we have 36 feet in front, two nine-by-18 parking spaces, plus the two nine-by-18s underneath.
Yeah, there's like.
So a total of four.
Fifty-three feet inside, so.
Yeah, there's plenty of room.
Yeah, there's actually enough room to get two-and-a-half, three cars inside.
What's half a car?
You know, a smart, a smart, a smart car and two.
So Jim, we're going to push that back, we're going to meet parking, we're going to have two in front, two underneath, for a total of four.
And I'll indent the door.
And obviously, if Charlie and Nikki decide they want to move the house back, they're still going to comply anyway, but it sounds like this way is better to leave the house box where it is.
It would be better further out towards the street.
Good, okay. I'm sorry, Jim, I cut you off.
That's okay. So basically, we'll restore that curb on the one side and do a new curb cut on the other. Grass strip, a little bit more landscaping that's, you know, will make the front look real nice with some, like a rose garden, some flower gardens and some grass.
You're going to meet the requirement for front and total landscaping, correct?
Correct.
We're not looking for a variance for that.
No.
And we're meeting, of course, height, eve height, pitch is going to be five-on-12, that's a big deal here.
Five-on-12, and then, and I took away, after me and Mr. McLaren spoke, the shed roof dormer, I made a dormer with a gable, and the gable has a five-pitcher.
We talked a lot, Jim, when you were designing, and we were back and forth with Roger. Going to be 50 percent of the floor below, we're not seeking any variance for that.
Correct.
And then, you're not going to pull, right? So, it's, that's it, I, I, again, I don't want to oversimplify this, but we've been literally talking to Roger for several months getting to this design, but we just needed those side yard setbacks, and with that, we're, you know.
Well, I, I have a, you designed up and down the coast. I, I think if you look at Margate's largest lot would be a postage stamp in most of the rest of the country. So 43 and a third feet is kind of three foot over the minimum lot size in Margate, and you're asking for side yard setbacks with an empty lot. I, I know you want a bigger house, but I, I just don't see it. I, you have an empty lot, you've got more than the minimum lot size, and then you're asking for variances. I, I don't see any hardship here, other than you want a bigger house.
No, not necessarily, because we.
If you were invited to build a duplex there, we're not against two, two houses there if it meets code. So to say, well, we could have put two houses there, put two houses there.
But this, there's this, we're way under on building coverage and we're not even close to. And rear yard. So instead of having a longer, perhaps less desirable house, they want it shorter, but just a little bit wider. So they could go under building coverage, deeper into the back, more into the front.
How much under are they?
What's that?
How much under are they on building coverage?
We're 45 is the max, we're at 32, we're way under.
You're at 45 and you have?
32. So we thought that we, that obviously the, the house could get bigger, if, longer, much longer.
You just changed my mind.
Well, I know about that, but I think, you know.
That's very good.
This is a really, and that's, that's why I'm glad Charlie's here, because he really had more input than anyone else. He didn't want a weird-looking long house, could have been much, much bigger. And that means the third floor would have been bigger, everything would have been bigger. He wants a, you know, subtle house, but it does need some setback variances, so. If you look at the chart.
Good reason for it.
Rear yard, we had to be at 20, we're at 29, that doesn't happen in town. Coverage is low, and the front, 19 is the prevailing, we're at 33. Now we're at 36, so it's, there's a give and take, I guess, so with that, we would think.
Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for asking.
Your client should thank you.
Is there, Eric, is there a plan for a pool in the house, in back of the house?
No.
Nobody could put it there, there's plenty of room for it.
Well, look, he's got little kids.
I just mean if he ever wanted to, it's not our concern, because there's plenty of room back there.
All my concern was pushing the house back.
No idea.
That was, that was part of that reason of that third floor was the grown-ups wanted a place to send the kids. So we made a big playroom up there.
Got it.
So it's, you know.
There's no shower up there, no tub?
There's a toilet and a vanity.
Yeah, okay.
Again, Mr. Patterson, I can't stress this enough, and this is only for the purpose of informing the board, this plan might be version 10 that Jim and Roger went through, we really tried to get it. We knew we needed variances, but we wanted to give back as much as we could, so all the things that we.
Early on, we did, we did only have 20-foot setback, we had like a 10-foot deeper house. And after I started laying it out and actually working with the owners, I, I talked them into shortening it because it was like getting to be a bowling alley when you, you know, the, the open look, the front to the back wall was like 65 feet. And I said, this is, it's way too big, we've got to cut it down. So we cut it down to where it was, you know, attractive, usable space.
As far as the third floor, you're saying it's only a toilet and a vanity, but your plans that were currently given us tonight show a full bad.
Yeah, that's.
So you're going on the record saying that's going to be removed to.
Yeah, and we're going to take, yeah, because we also, the actual, if you look at it in a, in a cross-section, the shower sticks up through the roof, because there's no dormer there.
So you're, you're getting the dormer off of there, that was my next question, okay.
We took the dormer off the one side, we kept it on the other side for the stairway.
And then just for clarification, and I understand where Mr. Patterson was coming from, but I don't agree with him.
On what?
On the side yard setbacks. We're in a multifamily zone, so it's a very generous 45. If we were in a standard 40-foot lot.
You do agree, I said I changed my mind.
No, I'm saying, I don't agree.
Oh, okay.
That we should give a variance on a 40. In other words, you have a lot, you're asking for five total feet variance, and your lot's already three foot over. So now you're at eight feet more than what a normal lot would be. It's just way too much for, for a ground-up house. It's, it's, we're giving away too many variances and we can't keep doing it. It's an empty lot, it's oversized, and we really should, we should shrink the house. You're only two-and-a-half feet on each side.
But Mr. Collins, just respectfully, if we did that, it would be longer.
That's not our problem.
No, no, but we don't want to make it longer.
Yeah, but we don't care about the aesthetics, what are you going to do at the back of the property? We can't keep infringing on neighbors, you need air, light, and open space, you need egress for fire, for police. We're, we keep closing it in, we can't keep doing it, okay? Go ahead.
On that same line, the house next door is pretty, very new, that has an eight-foot setback. They're eight foot from the property line on both sides. On the left, the base side's eight foot, and so is the right side, eight foot. They, they've adhered to the ordinance of eight feet, and you want to go to five and a half, and that's, you could go back with another room towards the back of the house. That's what, that's why I said in the rear of the house, whether you're putting a pool in or not, because you could put another room on the back of the house, possibly. We've had to shrink the house up four feet. That's, the house right now is 32 feet wide by 54 feet long. 32 feet wide, to me, is, is a wide house, pretty wide. 32. 32 by 54. But that's, that's my point, the, the houses next door adhere to the eight-foot setbacks.
Again, Thomasano is going to respectfully disagree, I think this is a more subtle design, and we're talking about two-and-a-half on each side, but there's so much more space in the front and so much more in the back, and we're so far under on coverage that it does, if we were, if we were maxed out on everything else, I would agree with your argument. But in this regard, we're under trying to make it, you know, just a less obtrusive house in the, in the length of it. Well, Mr. Luciano said, I mean, Mr. Cannoli said yes. Um, make it six feet on each side, two feet. Instead of needing a total of five, we would need a total of four.
Shrink the house.
Half and a, half a foot on each side. And then we're even more under on coverage and under on everything else, so, well, I guess we would modify it. Instead of needing five and a half here on each side, we would have six feet on each side.
For the record, the FAR is less than required. You're required to have no more than one. It's at point eight-two.
As is, right?
As presented.
So now it'll even get better, because we'll shrink it by whatever that's, six inches by the length of the house. So the FAR will go down, not substantially, but it'll still go down.
Anything else on the board?
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Six-foot setback on each side, and everything else would remain the same. When we move the front, as, as Mr. Palmisano asked before, move the garage door back so we comply with parking in the front, four spots total.
Anything else on the board? You okay, Mr. Goldstein?
I'm okay. We would rest again.
Okay.
Public or anybody else has questions, but we appreciate the input, of course, but.
Let's go to the public. Anyone here from the public have any questions, comments? Public portion's closed. Please read a motion.
Will we complete? Eric, Eric, you're.
I think so.
Okay. Um, there's two variances, two C variances, side yard setbacks on each side. Eight feet's required. They're gonna amend them, so to provide six feet on each side. So those are the two variances. The condition, they're gonna move the garage door back, so there's thirty-six feet from the front of the garage.
Not just a door, like, make it an alcove.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
In, in terms of moving the door back, so you'll make that condition compliant with our ordinance. So that the thirty-six feet's provided, there'll be two spaces in front, two in the garage for four total spaces. Submit compliance plans consistent with it, with any approval granted by the board. Will comply with any reps made during the course of the hearing, subject to any outside approvals and any other conditions in Mr. McLaren's report, unless otherwise addressed on the record tonight.
I make a motion?
Tom Collins?
So basically, what we're doing here is we're looking at two things. Either it's a hardship variance or a substantial benefit. When you have an oversized lot, there's no substantial benefit to the city of Margate or any taxpayer to grant variance for no reason, just so you can design a house differently or whatever you want. There's no hardship here because your lot's three foot over. I look at it as, as being either inefficient or greedy, or whatever you wanna call it, but this, we can't just keep giving variances in Margate. So I, there's no way that there's any justification, C-one or C-two, where I could come up and say, this is, this is a, uh, a, a provable. So I vote no.
Richard Patterson?
Every case is unique. Every case stands on its own. And I'm always concerned in approving or denying a case, considering what it's gonna generate, what else is gonna come in. In my twenty years here, there, there's been one like this that we granted on Knight and Atlantic Avenue, where we gave them a variance and they gave back. Now, I think this is different than saying, if you wanna put two houses here, go ahead and put two houses there. But I think what you're giving back in the explanation I got from the architect and Eric did satisfy me that I think it's beneficial to give that variance and have a much smaller footprint and more open space around that house, that I think there is a benefit. I don't really see it as a hardship, but I, I think I see that as a benefit in this particular case. And I don't see this as leading to more, hopefully, leading to other people looking at this. So for those reasons, I approve.
Michael Cristaldi?
I'm not crazy about the setbacks on either side. But basically, because if, if, if the houses were older houses next door, I would definitely be against it because it gets into the fire rule that you jeopardizing a neighbor. That now you penalize them to where their side yard could be. Uh, and then as far as making the house longer, you already have a cruise liner down the street. It looks terrible, so I, I do agree with that. Giving up the six inches on either side is big just for rescue if need. So I'm gonna vote yes, and I don't see any negatives.
Jim Gallantino?
I agree with the chairman's response, and I don't see any reason why we can't grant the variance for that reason. I approve.
Margaret Gubronalte?
I agree with, um, Mr. Patterson. Um, I like that it's a smaller footprint. We're getting one family in a two-family zone. There is a lot less coverage here than what could be. And while I don't like giving out variances for these properties, um, I see this as a benefit, and, um, I vote in favor.
Craig Palmisano?
Well, you made a lot of changes. You, you've done some, a lot of positives on the house. But I'm still set against the six-foot setback where it should be eight foot. The brand-new house next door is eight foot. We made them go eight foot, but not you. But you could make it longer. You could put a room in the back. Airlight and space, that have taken away the side of the house a little bit. And the properties conformed that are next to you on both sides of it. So I, I'm gonna have to say no on this due to the side yard setback.
Steven Jizacki?
Well, you guys really tore me on this one, because everybody has a good argument here. It is taking a, a shorter, a smaller footprint, which is, I think, very important, and you're adding more yard space. And there's something that people forget, that backyards, I think backyards are important. I think if you have children, you want your kids in your backyard. I see these backyards that are like only ten feet wide. They're ridiculous. You're adding more, more, uh, outside space out there, and you're taking up less footprint. I don't like the fact that, you know, it's so wide. I know, like, I only have three feet between my house and my neighbor, and when they go by, I mean, it gets noisy and. But anyway, I think that this is a better improvement of what could be done, so I'm, I approve.
Michael, review.
I agree with Mr. Patterson. I was, I was initially, I was on the fence. But I think the smaller footprint, that makes up for the setback, and the, the extra, the extra six inches, the extra foot total, I think is a good concession, and I'm, I'll vote yes on this.
Michael Richman?
I mean, I know what Tom's saying, and I do it very well. But in this situation, you know, it, this kind of re, this property kind of reminds me of old-school Margate, which I grew up in this area, and with the big backyard and the big front yard setback. You know, and we do have six feet. I am gonna approve this one, but, um, moving forward, I, I do agree with Tom. We need to say no, you know. I don't know how architects and, you know, they're gonna just, yeah. Somebody's gonna have to tell them. But this one I will, just because of the fact, like Steve was saying, I mean, it's such, it's, yeah, I, I love backyards, you know, and I think the more space, the better, and, you know, with the kids and everything, I, I, I'm gonna approve this one.
Motion carries, seven in the affirmative, two in the negative.
Thank you all.
Next case is Scott Hummel, one oh five South Douglas Avenue, block four point zero two, lot three, located in the S-thirty zoning district, seeking C-variance relief for front yard setback, side yard setback, and possibly others to extend the front porch. Taxes and water payments are current, and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a carryover application from July. For the application of Scott Hummel, one zero five South Douglas Avenue, block four point zero two, lot three, located in the S-thirty zoning district. Seeking C-variances in planning and zoning report. It's a substantial benefit variance. Background is as follows. The applicant is seeking relief from the city. City ordinance is to construct an expansion of a front door or front portion deck in the front yard of an existing home within a beach block on South Douglas Avenue. The expansion triggers some variance relief requests outlined below.
Did Mr. Collins recuse himself?
He, he, he did, and I was gonna say that as soon as.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead. That's all right. The zoning chart is on page two. Continue on page three, including the documents reviewed. Some, uh, highlighted, uh, documents that were reviewed. One was the decision and resolution of number sixty-five of two thousand and three. And it shows that the, they sought variances back in two thousand and three for rear yard setbacks and some other issues. So three variances have been identified. One is a front yard setback and to the front porch, and also similarly to the second-floor deck. Whereas required front yard setback to the first-floor porch, or any porch or deck in the front, is seven point two feet. Six point eight feet exists, and five feet is proposed. So again, that's two variances, one for the porch, one for the second-floor deck. And the third variance is a front yard landscape coverage, whereas the required minimum front yard landscape coverage is sixty percent, uh, four hundred and sixty-two feet. Twenty-four point six percent exists, and twenty-two point six percent is proposed. Again, the definition of a front yard is the space extending the full width of the lot between any building in front line measured perpendicular to the building at its closest point to the front lot line. That's the building, not the porch and the deck. So that's basically it. It's not a very complicated application, but I just wanted to point those issues out.
Thank you, Mr. McClellan. My members of the board, my name's Chris Ballson. Our president, Scott Hummel, is here with us tonight for his. House he's had at one oh five South Douglas Avenue, it's lot three, block four point oh two, in the S-thirty zoning district. The application is, as Mr. Carter pointed out, front yard setback, so the Hummels can move there. First-floor porch about eighteen inches forward, and put a deck above it. When we talked about the variances from two thousand and two, when they initially bought the house, what they did, they renovated an existing home. It wasn't a fresh lot that they were working with. They took an existing home that kind, had kind of an irregular shape and worked from there. And that, that necessitated variances. There were no footprint changes. There were no extensions into setbacks that didn't exist. It all stayed the same, but because of the vertical expansion setbacks were, uh, setback variances were required. What you'll hear tonight from Steve Fenwick and John Barnhart is that in this particular case, understanding the beach block, there is justification for what is proposed. Number one, because they worked with an existing home, they, they have no outside living space, none. There's a driveway in front of the house, and that's it. And it's kind of an odd house, difficult to figure out actually where the front door is. And this will address a lot of those concerns. It'll also provide some outside living space that they don't have now. Um, you'll hear that the proposal is consistent with other homes in the block. Setbacks are close. And what John will tell you is that the setback, Roger, is not seven and change. It's more like six. The average setback, there's a modified setback survey, it goes to about six point eight versus seven point one. It's just slightly. But the, the change is about eighteen inches forward with the deck above. Scott's here. He's gonna speak. Steve Fenwick will speak. John Barnhart will speak. Um, they could all be, swear a lot together.
All, all three, sure. Each of you, the three, you can state your name and business ad, address and/or address for the record, and I'll swear all three of you in together. That being Mr. Hummel, Mr. Fenwick, and Mr. Barnhart.
Testing, yes. Hi, Scott Hummel, one oh five South Douglas Avenue. What else was needed? I'm sorry.
That's it for now. Just need some names, and I'm gonna swear y'all in.
Steve Fenwick, licensed architect and planner, offices in Lynwood, New Jersey.
John Barnhart, office address, four hundred North Dover Avenue, Atlantic City. Professional engineer, professional planner.
And if all three, you can please raise your right hand each, swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening will be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And, and as you hear the testimony, keep in mind that the existing home, when it was renovated, the front porch is, was always there. It was not added. There was a sunroom that the board allowed to be de-converted at that existing setback of, um, five, eight, I believe it was. Or no, six, six point eight feet back. That was there.
The front porch was a sunroom?
Yes, it was opened up. That porch was always there. And when you think about it, everybody's thinking that this, this new deck is gonna be on top of the sidewalk. It really is not. The profit line is well inside of the grass, so it's gonna be between eight and nine feet, between the deck and the porch and the, and the inside line of the sidewalk. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be great five feet on top of the sidewalk. It'll be closer to eight or nine feet back. Getting the appearance of about an eight-to-nine-foot setback. Steve Fenwick, please. Oh, Scott, you gonna go first? Sure, fire away.
Thank you for your time tonight. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, just, uh, brief and quickly. Um, so, yes, my wife and I bought the house and renovated it twenty years ago. Um, now twenty years later, my kids are twenty-one and twenty-four, um, and we're spending a lot more time down here. And what we're missing, what we desire, what I wish I would've done twenty years ago is, is put some more deck space on the front floor and up on the second floor, like most houses have, um, on my block and in the neighborhood. I don't have any backyard. As Chris Ballson mentioned, we never changed the footprint of the house. So twenty years later now, my wife and I are discussing what to do with the next twenty years of our life. She is not here tonight. She desires that we tear it down and, uh, build a house similar to, uh, what they're building on Essex and Franklin. I'm not particularly as fond. Um, yes, I'll have garages underneath and three floors of deck and a lot more room, but, um, I've got a, what I feel is an interesting Mediterranean-style house. Uh, the block I live on, each house is unique. I'd like to maintain that kind of integrity and character and the architectural uniqueness of it. I spent a lot of time with my neighbors, uh, both one oh three South Douglas, uh, Bruce Batzer, and one oh seven South Douglas, the Tewers, and directly across the street, one oh four, um, the Rubens. And I sat with them, and I told them I'm looking to go another eighteen inches out and then duplicate on the second floor. Um, and they've all supported me, um, and in fact, they were happy I'm not tearing that house down and building what I think I can. I think the lots on Franklin and Essex are fifty by sixty, so I could do exactly what they're doing. Not, there's anything wrong with that. Um, but I favor this house. I also enjoy the fact that when I'm on my front porch, um, I'm only, I could talk to my neighbors when they're walking by. I'm not fifteen steps up. I'm getting older in age. I don't wanna be fifteen steps up. I, I like the fact I'm, I'm there on the street with them. So thank you for your time, and, um, I'll let the professionals take over from here.
Scott, Tom recused himself. You're, you're a parent of a store in, you can't make out.
Yeah, Tom, uh, uh, True Value is a tenant of mine down at a shopping center I own down in Cape May. So I guess Tom, um, by right, recused himself, properly recused himself. It's not that he doesn't like me. I hope it's not, yeah. Well, it's not my fault. Take your place around the corner. I'm sorry.
Kind of describe for the board, um, what Scott asked you to do, and then what it is you did, and then we'll have John, who can justify on variance.
Yes, so Scott came to us. Uh, he told us, uh, how much he liked his house and, uh, and, and he wanted to improve it. Chris mentioned the front door, so we, we, the front door was kind of tucked in the side. You couldn't see it from the street. So we changed that, created a little porch and entry. And, um, there's a chimney here, uh, that kind of makes the existing porch very difficult to use. So, um, Scott asked us to see if we could, uh, make, enlarge it so he could properly use it and to, um, take that same porch up to the second level and to provide a, a stair from that porch to the ground. This is just a three-dimensional illustration of what that looks like.
Steve, there's no proposal or consideration for a roof above the second floor? Steve, there's no proposal or consideration for a roof above the second floor deck, correct?
Not that I'm aware of. Not in this application. And there's, yeah, so, yeah, and there's no proposal to lift the house or knock the house down, it's just what you see. So, I mean, I'll point out with this drawing that this house is unique in that we're asking for like approximately a two-foot extension on this lower deck, but the house steps really way back on the other side. So, this neighbor gets lots of light and air, this neighbor is out quite a bit further than the Hummels.
So, you still won't stick out further than the neighbor on the Atlantic Avenue side?
We will not.
How far back will you be? Any idea?
Well, yeah.
With the extended one and a half feet?
Well, maybe John Barnhart could talk to that, because I'm reading from his chart.
I have exhibit here for it.
Okay, good.
Okay, I'll wait for John.
Good. I'm still struggling with that 6.8 stuff. Okay. So, here's the site drawing to help illustrate what Chris and Scott were saying. There's no backyard, it's pre-existing from a long time ago. So, we're asking just to extend this front porch 1.9 feet. It just makes it usable. And I should point out, because it's part, well, I'll get into the, I'm going to do the zoning chart real quick.
Steve, let John do that, he can do that. I don't want to do it twice.
No, he can't. I'm going to do it, okay?
Take that.
I mean, how would he know? So, the, um...
Listen out.
Well, I want to point out that the existing front of the house is, could be moved out 30 inches more, 2.6 feet more, because...
Without variance.
Without variance. And we're asking only for 2 feet, 1.9 feet for the deck, which has a lot more light and air to it. So, it just, that just there in itself makes it reasonable. We're improving the landscape coverage, and the height of the house is 34 feet, whereas if you built what Mrs. Hummel would like, the house would be 39 feet high. So, that's the end of my testimony, and John can fill in the blanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, that bumping a house out another 30 inches, you would need a variance for building coverage, correct?
Of course.
Right.
So, landscaping or building coverage?
Building coverage. You're already over, so you're increasing the building.
John, without me asking you a bunch of questions, would you just give the board the benefit of why you need to take the help with the variance, justification of variance at this location?
Sure. Mr. Hummel's been a client of ours for my whole career, and he asked us to look at this from a planning perspective. So, what we did is, obviously, we had to do a 200-foot setback survey, but I think it's important to really actually look at this specific block and this side of the block to understand why this is an appropriate request. As was already discussed, the property, the properties on either side of us are interesting in that our existing porch setback is 6.8 feet. We're proposing to go to 5 feet, so we're moving it out, we're proposing to move it out just a little bit. The property on the Atlantic Avenue side, their actual first floor deck or porch is actually .1 feet from the front property line, essentially on the line. And then their building itself, they have a second-level deck as well, their building is, that deck has building below it, that building is just over 6 feet from the front property line. So, they're considerably out further than what Mr. Hummel's project proposes with, even with the expansion of his deck on the first floor, and very consistent with the position of their deck at the second level, just about a foot and a half different.
I mean, Scott will still be behind Batzer's house next door.
Yes, well, on the first level, yes, and the second level will be roughly the same, within about a foot and a half, correct? But I think this is a case where we can argue from a C-1 perspective as a hardship condition where Mr. Hummel has chosen not to make any dramatic renovations to the home, but try to work within the confines of how this property has sat for well over 20 years, even before he renovated it. So, he's trying to create a scenario where he has some outdoor living space, some meaningful outdoor living space. He has that first floor deck now, it's a little, approximately 8 and 1/2 feet, a nice space, but that additional, that additional foot and a half makes a big difference, because it allows a table to be put out there, allows you to appropriately walk around it, it gives him some shade at the first level when he puts the second-level deck on, and then gives him access from his bedroom level onto his deck area. So, that becomes a really nice outdoor living space, which this property, while it's absolutely beautiful, really doesn't have because of the position of the existing house. So, for those reasons, we believe that because he's working within the confines of the existing condition, that the variance can be granted under the C-1 condition. But I think also important is that we are extremely consistent with the development pattern. The new house on the corner of Atlantic and Douglas Avenue has two levels of decks, their round numbers are 6 and 1/2 feet from the front property line. Mr. Hummel's proposing to be 5 feet as a result of where his existing house position is. When they constructed that home, they had the ability to put the building wall where they wanted it and have appropriately sized decks that come out to that 6 and 1/2 feet. Mr. Hummel does not have that option. Going along, going right down the avenue, as I already mentioned, the house immediately adjacent to us on Atlantic Avenue is out much further, both on their first-floor deck, is out much further than us in their principal building, and is going to be relatively the same as us with our second-floor deck structure. Going on the ocean side of us, their front porch is 7.3 feet from the property line, and then the ocean front is actually a little bit greater, 9.7, but the reality of it is they don't really have a deck on the front. That's just their stoop and entry into their building, all of their deck living space is obviously on the ocean front. So, while we are deviating slightly and going to that more minimum of 5 feet, we are still, we believe, very much consistent with the development pattern on the block. We don't have decks that are setback 10, 15, 20 feet in this block. We have a consistency pattern. I also believe that this can be argued under the C-2 criteria. The building is absolutely beautiful, but Mr. Fenwick did a wonderful job of creating an aesthetic with these two deck structures. The front of the building is interesting in that it's the main piece of building that is close to the property line, it kind of looks like the side of the building. It doesn't have a front entry, you have to go by the building to really even notice where the front entry is because of the way the entry sits back. This gives it, we believe, a more aesthetically pleasing presence on Douglas Avenue, which goes to the aesthetic enhancement. I also think that airlight and open space is clearly preserved by virtue of the fact that these are open decks, and the position of, or I'm sorry, the shape of the house, Mr. Hummel's house, had, or nearly 50 percent of the width of the lot, is wide open because that second portion of the house sits so far back from the street.
John, that setback's like in excess of 30 feet or so?
Yeah, roughly, yes, yeah. So, again, we believe that this can be granted under both the C-1 and the C-2 criteria. I think when you look at the consistency of the development pattern, I think that establishes the negative criteria by way of, is there any substantial detriment to the public good? I think that this shows that there is not, that it's consistent with the public around us. You heard Mr. Hummel talk about his discussions with his neighbors who were in support. I don't know if there's any other neighbors here that may speak this evening, but we believe that there is no substantial detriment to the public good. Is there a substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance? We believe this is a minor request, but also creates a major aesthetic impact in a positive way on this block of Douglas Avenue, and then, of course, gives Mr. Hummel what he's trying to achieve, which is to maintain that house, stay with its character, but pick up on some outdoor living space.
Thanks, John.
So, I think the positive and negative criteria are both established.
Thank you very much. Scott, tell the board one thing you told me, what's it like to sit on that porch in the middle of the deck?
So, 20 years ago...
Microphone.
I'm sorry. 20 years ago, I made a big mistake. I thought, I want all the sunshine I can get. I don't even sit on my front porch, it's fiberglass, it's just so hot. I actually sit in the little stoop area where my front, I have a beach chair under here is where I sit, because it's just so hot here with the sun, that not only will the second-floor deck give me some living space off the bedroom, but it'll let me entertain and be out, and have outdoor use more so than I do now. If that answers your question.
Was that drawing that Mr. Fenwick showed us, was that a joke, or was that the actual house that would be built if you tore this down and built a new one?
I didn't want to go there.
I'm asking, let me finish. Is that...
My, oh, me or you?
Basically, a wire diagram, it's not, obviously, a drawing indicating any aesthetics, but that is the bulk of a house that the zoning allows.
So, oh, okay. I was going to say your wife had no taste, but that's fine.
At least we...
Well, you were showing us the house, saying this is what would be there.
At least you got an elevation, right?
That's a long one. I didn't have any windows. I only say that because she's not here.
That's just between you and me.
We're good, thank you.
Anything else? Anything from the board? Leo?
I think we've got to open it up to the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. State your name and address, please.
Davida Levin, 1 North Douglas. I'm not here...
Stop.
I'm not here...
Stop. You have to be sworn in.
You swear the testimony, you'll tell the truth? Okay.
Yes. I'm not here for this, I'm here for the one that used to be the Chinese restaurant.
Yes.
But I walk by his house. I don't know him, but I walk by that beautiful house every day, and I think that having those added decks would only add to Douglas Avenue, which is a wonderful street, and it would look great. We wouldn't mind seeing the change.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Public portion's closed.
Okay. And I'll just note, to the extent we didn't say it, obviously, Mr. Barnhart, Mr. Fenwick have been here multiple times, and we accept their credentials. But the variances, the C-variants application, the following C-variants is, there's a front yard setback to the porch at 5 feet, or 7.2 feet's requirement, front yard setback to the second-floor deck, same 5 feet's proposed, 7.2 is the requirement, then front yard landscaping is 22.6 percent, where 60 percent is the requirement. The conditions, I'll just note the standard ones, subject to any outside approvals, any representations made by the applicant, anything else in Mr. McLaren's report unless otherwise addressed on the record tonight. Just want you to have that motion and a second, a roll call. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
A lot of times, people come in and the board actually feels like it's a threat against us, if we don't get this, we're going to do that. And you really scared me with that drawing of what you might do. I mean, emotionally here, I'm so glad that that house is staying as it is and being approved, and I think we, in situations like this, we have a history of encouraging neighborliness, of being able to sit on your front porch and talk to your neighbors. The fact that you're not coming out, you'll still be less further out than the house you would be blocking from the beach view is a big factor, so I just see positives here other than other neighbors wanting to go out further because the average is lower, but I approve this application.
Michael Cristaldi?
We're saving another one, thank goodness. I mean, pretty soon, we're going to start having funeral services for these gorgeous homes that we lose, and just meet somewhere. It's just a sin what we're losing in this town as far as homes. That's a beautiful home. You did a great job adding that deck. If any neighbor complained about that, they should move. I vote for this.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
I see no detriment, only positives. No detriment to the public good, it's a positive aesthetic, it's really nice. I'm happy that you're maintaining the house and maintaining outside space to enjoy, and I vote in favor.
Craig Palmisano?
Your house needs a second-floor deck, it really does. That first-floor deck looks lost without it, and it's got big improvement to the neighborhood and yourself, there for your own home, and you'll have ocean views and everything else. I approve.
Stephen Jazekki?
Yeah, it's beautiful. I mean, I don't see any detriment, really. I mean, in the front, you're just coming out a few feet, or a little bit in front. I approve.
Michael Rafiu?
I think Mr. Barnhart's testimony and the aerial view to me was very helpful, so thank you, I appreciate that. And I hear and appreciate Mr. Hummel's desire to interact with passersby, neighbors, I think in this day and age. You know, that's a commendable ambition to me, but I think it's a great addition, looks great. I see nothing wrong with it. I'm going to approve it. I vote yes.
Andrew Campbell?
Yeah, now you can have your neighbors over to your house now, right? Yeah, I really like it, and I'm all for saving these houses as well. I'm an old-school guy here, so I definitely approve it.
Michael Richman?
Yeah, I think the design fits into the neighborhood pattern, and I'm going to approve it.
Motion carries, eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
We're going to take a five-minute break?
Thank you, everybody, thank you. Hi, Scott.
All right.
We're back in session.
All right. We're back in session. I'll take the lead on this because we don't... Thanks. All right. We're back in public session. As authorized by resolution at this time, the planning board for the City of Margate will be entering into an executive session, not open to the general public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. The matters to be discussed are pending litigation, S.A.S. Associates LLC versus the City of Margate and City of Margate Planning Board, Superior Court in Jersey, Docket ATL-L1504-23, and other attorney-client privileged matters. The board will keep minutes of the executive session as required by law, which will be approved by the board and made promptly available for public inspection when required and permitted by law. When we come out of executive session, we will come back into open session, and we will proceed from there. To go into executive session, everyone has in their packets Resolution Number 34-2023. So, we need to make, this is just to go into executive session, a motion, a second, and a roll call vote, just a yes or a no, but we're just going into...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So, the motion, and I have to keep track of this, so the motion was Patterson, Mr. Chairman Patterson, and Mr. Cristaldi was the second, and then we just need a quick roll call vote to go into executive session. A simple yes or no is fine.
Tom Collins?
Yes.
Richard Patterson?
Yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
Yes.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Yes.
Craig Palmisano?
Yes.
Stephen Jazekki?
Yes.
Michael Rafiu?
Yes.
Andrew Campbell?
Yes.
Okay. And Jimmy Galantino left the meeting, so he's no longer present, so we'll just note that for the record. Okay, so at this time, everyone in the public, we have to ask you to step outside, and then we'll call you back in and we'll go back into a public session.
We're leaving everyone out, right?
Yeah, everyone out, yeah. Do we lock the door? Yeah, Chris included. And then, we don't record this, but we have to keep minutes.
We're back in session?
All right. Okay, so we concluded our executive session. Okay, so we, we concluded our executive session. We're now back in open session. Uh, the matters discussed again in the executive session, pending litigation involving the planning board and S.A.S. Associates LLC versus the planning board and the city of Margate. And now that we're back in open, open session, and I know a couple of people have left from earlier in the meeting, once again, have to just take, take a roll call for who's here, and then we'll proceed to the next matter on the agenda.
Richard Patterson?
Here.
Michael Cristaldi?
Here.
Margaret Guber Nolte?
Here.
Craig Palmisano?
Here.
Mike Richmond?
Here.
Stephen Jazekki?
Here.
Michael Ruffiu?
Here.
Andrew Campbell?
Here.
All right.
Okay.
So, I could, I'll take this then. So the next matter on the agenda, Whispering Woods hearing, S.A.S. Associates LLC, seventy-eight hundred Venter Avenue, block one oh five, lot twenty-five, located in the CB, CBD zoning district. This is a public hearing on a potential settlement of pending litigation entitled S.A.S. Associates LLC versus city of Margate and city of Margate Planning Board, Atlanta County Superior Court, Docent number ATL dash L dash fifteen oh four dash twenty-three. The applicant, S.A.S. Associates, and the city of Margate and the planning board have negotiated a draft settlement agreement of this matter with, uh, draft plans, a draft site plan from, uh, and, uh, Mr. Schaefer's office and some elevations and other plans from Steve Fenwick's office. Those plans are on file. Um, in order to settle pending litigation, you have to have what's called a Whispering Woods hearing, and that, that's the name of the case, which basically says, before any zoning matter such as this can be resolved by way of a settlement, it has to be subject to a public hearing on notice and on publication as required by the municipal land use law. The applicant has provided those notices. Um, again, there's a draft settlement agreement, draft settlement plans. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the applicant's, uh, the, who was the plaintiff in this lawsuit's presentation, and determine whether the board approves the, uh, the settlement plan. If so, we'll sign the settlement agreement, and then next month, we would have a, likely do it with any matter, a decision and resolution, setting for some more detailed reasons for approving the settlement. That said, Mr. Ballson?
Thank you. Members' board, my name is Chris Ballson. I represent S.H.A. Associates, uh, with respect to property, seven eight zero zero Venter Avenue, it's the old Billy Ho Restaurant Site, block one oh five, lot twenty-five, in the CBD zoning district. We do not have a full-blown presentation for each night. We've already done that. We've done that in February, we've done that in January. When we came before the board in February, we presented a plan that was denied, eight to one, I think, that was denied, which proposed a mixed-use building that complied with the zoning ordinance with respect to the first-floor retail and the second-floor density for the number of units. It proposed four, four units, four bedrooms. Um, we asked for a variance for nine commercial parking spaces. We, we proposed four commercial parking spaces and nine residential spaces, uh, which conform, the variance was for nine commercial spaces, as well as a height variance, which is actually encouraged by the master plan. That application was denied despite, I'm not gonna say that. That application was denied. We came back, taking what I thought was the guidance of the board. We came back with a plan that was conforming in all respects. We removed the height variance. We removed the parking variance and came with a plan that had required number of parking spaces, which was thirteen for the commercial and nine for the residential, twenty-two spaces. Uh, the density remained the same because density was, uh, conforming. And the, unfortunately, the retail agreed was reduced dramatically to eighteen hundred square feet because we had to provide the park. Parking takes away the retail space. And we, we, we had that discussion. Nonetheless, that was a buy right plan despite what the law suggests. The board denied that as well. S.H.A., we filed suit challenging those decisions, and we are here, as Leo said, pursuant to a Whispering Woods hearing to confirm a settlement that we have been discussing over the last month or so, and I believe you guys heard about it in executive session. Uh, I have two witnesses. Uh, Steve Fenwick is the project architect. He will explain to you briefly what the changes to the building are architecturally, internally. Uh, Andy Schaefer, who is our, also a planner and engineer, will testify as to why we believe that the February plan is even, that settlement plan is even better than a buy right plan. Uh, and, um, I know it's been a long night. Let's get that started before I say, keep talking.
Okay.
And, um, Andy and Lee Roster of S.H.A. is here with us for the record.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fenwick, Mr. Schaefer, just your name and business address for the record. I'll swear the two of you in together.
Uh, Stephen Fenwick, uh, architect, uh, offices in Linwood, New Jersey.
Andy Schaefer, engineer and planner, Maze Lane, New Jersey.
Andy, if you could please each raise your right hand. Uh, do you each swear affirm the testimony you'll give this evening, it'll be the truth?
Yes.
Yes, it will.
And obviously, you're, you're qualified. You've been here on this application at least twice, let alone other applications, so.
Mr. Fenwick, the limited purpose of our presentation this evening is not to go back through various, is not to go back through various justification, et cetera. It is to describe, um, why this plan is, is a better plan than the one that was recently denied, the buy right plan. Um, if you would, there, some changes have been made to the building with respect to this revised plan, uh, and it's even different than it was in February slightly. Would you testify to the board and tell them with respect to the number of bedrooms and the style of unit and the downstairs space, how this plan has changed? Please.
So the number of units remains the same, but the number of bedrooms in each unit is reduced from four bedrooms to three bedrooms. The arrangement, um, of the units in the prior application was, uh, kind of two-story townhouses over the commercial space. In this plan, there, there, there's two units per floor for two floors. So they're flats with an elevator, with a lobby at each level. So that's, that, that helped free up some space, and we ended up going from eighteen hundred square feet in the prior application to twenty-eight hundred square feet of commercial space. Those are the major primary changes. Andy can talk about the parking, and Chris already talked about the parking that was adjusted to accommodate those, but essentially, there's nine spaces for the residents, two per unit, one handicap space, and there's four spaces for the commercial. That, and, and this is the, the layout. The entrance to the building is here. The elevator goes up. You have a elevator lobby on each floor. You enter each unit at each floor.
See, the increase in, in the residential space and the retail space that creates the twenty-eight hundred square feet, how, how does that lay out in terms of access from, from outside?
Well, we, 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 we made it flexible, um, not knowing, you know, if it's gonna be one small tenant, one large tenant, one totally one tenant, two tenants, we didn't know. But basically, we have two doors in the center, so everything's symmetrical, and we have a door at either corner. So you could rent half of it easily. You could rent a third or the whole thing. So, um, it's flexible, and it seems like that's not a bad thing these days. You know, I mean, even the banks, they just wanna like a little place to, you know, do your business, but they don't need a whole facility. And, you know, it could be a, a small boutique, or somebody might wanna take the whole space, you know?
From, from a, um, observation standpoint, somebody outside, the building looks essentially the same as was presented previously?
The only difference is that you see how we have a deck at this level? And this is the old drawing, which doesn't have a deck at this level because this was one unit, this was another unit before. Now this is a unit, and this is a unit, so they both have a deck at each level. And that's reflected on this drawing here. I think you can probably see by the shadowing, this is a deck over a deck. Essentially, the aesthetics, the package is very, very similar.
And the windows across the front, they do extend across the entire property? Uh, down Venter Avenue? Exactly?
Yes. Well, yes, you can see there, yes, with brick piers between them. Jimmy's not here, but he's concerned about floodproofing, so are we. Are we, we gonna put floodproof panels between those brick piers?
And that complies with the FEMA regulations?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Steve. Andy?
Mr. Cristaldi, you had a question about that?
I did, but he answered it.
Okay.
Well, they're not using the fiberglass, you're using the flood panels.
Right.
Which is illegal.
So they're concerned with some of the board, you're gonna, so there's, the way that elevation looks with the glass, that's pretty much how it's gonna stay. You're not gonna go ahead and, and shorten, make, you know, because we had, just because we had this happen on another job where we approved. And then they're building down, they're using these, it looks, it doesn't look good.
Look at that, see, the height, the height of the windows will be almost full, full glass.
Right. Well, the, well, you see where the, the threshold of the door is?
Yeah.
So we did build, uh, a, 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 a low wall. Right. To reduce the height of the panel, to some extent, they're very expensive, and, um, um, also to protect for occasional flooding, right?
Our concern is that the final product looks like what you're showing us there.
Yes. That's correct.
Yes.
That, that's our basic concern, yes.
Yes, we did talk to a couple of different flood panel companies. They're pretty high-tech these days, they're all super certified.
The glass is crazy.
I, you know, we, we moved away from the glass, so it must've been too expensive. I did, I did a building where we used the flood panels and stuff. Okay. It's definitely built. It, it's, so you understand it, it's called dry floodproofing?
Yeah.
You're not allowed to use that in a residence. You have to have the flood, uh, vents to allow the water to go in and equalize the pressure on both sides, right? But we're allowed to, uh, engineer the dry venting system. You, you know, and you know where the golf course is now? It used to be Boardwalk Bank. Well, we designed that bank, and, um, yeah, they, uh, they didn't put their flood panels up, you know? I mean, police wouldn't let the guys on the island because it was already too late. They waited. So they got about quarter million dollars worth of damage in that bank. I forget which storm it was. But yeah, that's a very, it's right behind Wawa. It's very low, obviously. It's right here. It's very low. So, um, but we had the, the old panels there and, but here, they're gonna be putting them up.
What's, see, approximately, what's the height of that, um, knee wall? Not knee wall, that, that short stub wall in front?
About two feet high.
Okay. Thanks, thanks very much. That's perfect.
It's a little bit like what you guys have here. You know, in terms of how high you are above the sidewalk and the glow line.
Again, our concern is if that's what it's gonna look like, we want that. And, and we've had it before where that's what we were shown, and then it had a wall all the way up.
We know, okay. We know you can incorporate that in your resolution. That's fine.
We go through design development phase, and if there's any market changes, uh, but for, we would definitely come back, but, uh, as of this meeting and, uh, for right now, there won't be any changes.
Got it.
I know renderings are really hard to do to scale.
Well, this rendering, actually, what's so nice these days is this CAD system, computer drafting system. We draw it, it's actually a 3D model when we draw it, so then we just kind of, I don't know how to turn it on. We just hit a couple of buttons, and it turns it into a three-dimensional drawing, and then we dress it up with the trees and the people. So it's already built as a three-dimensional box, an object. All the window, if we move a window on the plan, the window changes on the elevation. It's pretty incredible, yeah.
Andy? Thanks, Steve. Andy, we, we presented, Andy's engineering and planner, and Andy, when we were here in February for the first application, we presented a plan with the twenty-eight hundred square feet of retail and four units upstairs, and we asked for a variance for the parking because collectively, we thought it was a better plan than a buy right plan.
And traditionally, that's how it's been done in Margate, yes.
Can, can you talk to the board and highlight some of those benefits of that plan versus, for instance, a buy right plan, or, or something less?
Okay, well, the, the original plan was consistent with what has been happening in Margate over decades, as well as the two thousand sixteen master plan, where the existing condition was, um, parking, no parking for commercial first floor, and parking was provided for, uh, residential above, second and third floor. So we came in with an application that looked like that. I believe it was more than twenty-eight hundred square feet of commercial at that point in time, unless parking. And then, uh, that didn't go so well, so we came back with a buy right application of eighteen hundred square feet and compliant parking. And now we're in a compromised situation where we're proposing twenty-eight hundred square feet. We are asking for, uh, a variance for parking for the, a partial variance for the commercial, in that we are required to have twenty-two spaces total for this application that's before you now, uh, with eight spaces being required for residential and, and the rest for commercial. And we are offering nine spaces reserved for residential because, actually, it was eight point four spaces, rounding down to be eight, but it makes a little more sense to go ahead and provide the nine for the commercial and the ADA space than a total of four spaces for the commercial. I'm sorry?
Nine residential, you said, commercial.
I'm sorry, yeah, nine residential and four for commercial. So it is a compromised situation. We are asking for height variance also, um, not much, but we are asking for one. And I think it's a better plan, and it's more consistent on the conservative side with the two thousand sixteen master plan that stated the existing conditions of retail below, residential above, and that's what we're offering here today. And that was the recommendation in the same master plan, which is what we're recommending here today. However, it is toned down a little bit from before. We're still asking for four residential units, three bedrooms each rather than four bedrooms each.
The, uh, master plan speaks of these buildings in the CBD district as, as being more grandiose, more lavish, so to speak, from a visual perspective?
Yes.
And, and one of the things it says is, the consideration should be for a larger building, a taller building in that regard, and that's why the height variance was incorporated initially.
Correct.
In February.
Correct, yes.
That's all I have for Mr. Schaefer. We, we really did think the February plan, and it was, there was a mistake on the plan. It wasn't eighteen hundred square feet, and the parking was the same.
Okay.
We're proposing this evening. It's, it's the same plan except flats versus townhouse. And we, we hope the board sees it that way and, and arrives in a settlement, um, with that, with S.H.A., which would result in a dismissal of the lawsuit and, um, moving forward with the project. And as you guys know, the zoning, the ordinance has since been changed where these mixed-use projects with this, uh, under these controls is no longer available. This will be the last one. Um, and you guys move forward from there working with the new ordinance. Thank you.
Anything from the board? Anyone here from the public? Does she have to be sworn in again?
Yes.
Yeah, just state your name and address and then wait to be sworn in.
Davida Levin, um, 1 North Douglas. I'm right across the street.
Yeah. Ms. Levin, do you swear affirm the testimony, give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead.
Um, I, I'm here only because I wanted to hear what it was decide, you know, what's going to be going across the street. We've come to one, uh, one of the other meetings, I think, or two. And, um, I hope that it's only two stores and not, I was assuming it was gonna be not only four residents, but four stores. And it's such a small property in my eyes, in the non-building eyes, um, that I just really couldn't see how they could fit four stores in there. So I'm hope that it's one or two stores. We love living where we live. We've had our house for forty-one years. We love being near restaurants and post offices and, and hardware stores. We enjoy that. It's, um, most of the trouble we have are, are people that work in these places and then park in front of our house and next door, our neighbor, and then leave the car there for five days because they go home with somebody else. So one or two stores sounds really good, and I hope that they.
Did you see the rendering of the, what it would look like?
Pardon me?
Did you see the rendering?
Yes.
What it would look like? You did, okay.
Yes, yes. So, um, sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Anything? Would you like to defend your project, sir? Public portion is closed. Leo?
Yeah, Chris, I, I thought it was, not, not that this necessarily matters, but I thought the, the calculation was eleven commercial spaces were required, and we have four. But it sounds like, looking at Andy's, maybe thirteen you're counting?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay.
Might have been eleven when it was eighteen hundred versus eighteen hundred, but it's thirteen.
Maybe that's, maybe that's it.
Thirteen to nine.
Okay. Okay. So. Okay, so if there's no further questions from the board, what we need is a motion and a second, and then a roll call vote to approve the settlement, the draft settlement agreement, which is between our planning board, S.A.S. Associates and the city of Margate. So the city of Margate will have to take a look at it at one of their commission meetings as well. And to approve the whole settlement plan as shown on the plans presented and in the testimony from Mr. Fenwick and Mr. Schaefer.
And Mr. Ballson, the record does incorporate the hearing?
Will incorporate the prior hearings, the two variances that are required by the current settlement plan, or the parking, the commercial parking variance, 13 required, but whatever that exact number is, they have four, three?
13 versus 22.
Right, okay, that's, that's a good way to say it.
The big variance is a C variance.
And a height variance, a C variance for the height of less than 10%. Those are the two variances. Will incorporate all the testimony from the prior hearings. If there was any checklist waivers from the site plan standards, those are included as well. That's more administrative stuff, but you just gotta make a note of it. And that's, that's pretty much it. We'll just need a motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Richard Patterson?
I think this settlement that has been described here tonight is benefits the city, and I approve.
Michael Cristaldi?
I'm in agreement with Mr. Patterson. I think it's the best direction for us at this, at this time. I vote yes.
Margaret Gubernolti?
I believe this to be a better alternative, and I approve the settlement plan.
Craig Palmisano?
I also agree to the good alternative.
Stephen Jazekki?
I'm not really crazy about it, but it is a better alternative than what we had before, so I'll approve it.
Michael Ruffew?
I think this is a good settlement, and I agree with the other board members. I'll approve it.
Andrew Campbell?
Given our options that we have here, I approve.
Michael Richmond?
I think it's a beautiful building, and it's gonna be an enhancement to Margate, and it feeds the alternative of being, you know, in litigation, so I approve it.
Motion carries, eight in the affirmative, zero in the negative.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. And there's, just, yeah. And then, I gotta find my agenda, there's one more quick thing. Next thing on the agenda is Resolution Number 35.
We have more business, board?
Just, this'll be easy. Resolution Number 35-2023, that's just a one-page resolution, it's in your packets. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Margate Planning Board to enter into and execute the settlement, a settlement agreement of pending litigation, which is the settlement agreement that we just approved. This just allows Rich to sign off on it, and Carmella is the board secretary to sign it, so.
Is this roll call, or is this?
Yeah, do a quick roll call on Resolution, motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 35-2023, and a quick roll call.
Steve?
Motion, Steve?
I'll second.
And Ruffew?
Richard Patterson?
Yes.
Michael Cristaldi?
Yes.
Margaret Gubernolti?
Yes.
Craig Palmisano?
Yes.
Stephen Jazekki?
Yes.
Michael Ruffew?
Yes.
Andrew Campbell?
Yes.
Michael Richmond?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes.
Second? Second? All in favor? Does she need anything back after we toss it away?
How about these?
That wasn't, that wasn't, oh, this is mine. That wasn't Mohammed Jordan. That was the Rosin.
You want these here?
Um, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Were you able to follow on those resolutions, the charts? I got it, hold on, one thing at a time. No, I did it.
You know that the kitchen is closed.
Who's pen was yours?
Yours?
Yours will be cold.
Thank you.
I have a sandwich and a bottle.
All right, let's get out of here.
All right. See, brother?
Turn everything in? We're not leaving all these for Carmella, right? Yeah, yeah. We're not leaving anything for you, Carmella, right? Prince? About locking the front door and stuff?
What's that?
Locking the front door?
Yeah, I brought a stick.
Oh, okay. I thought I was your stick.
Here, I'll give you...
I mean, I wrote you.
Yeah, I checked them off, too, so I think you just have to duplicate or even take my back page.
Or if you wanted to email to me, whatever you want to do. He just put a bank.
These are original, so.
A roadie's warehouse, I want a 250-yard big park, it's 800 North New York Avenue.
Yeah, you can swap out those two dates, or duplicate the X and Y date.
Okay.
Catch the back page.
Those were like two days.
Thirty-four.
Those were like from seven to seven, this goes on.
Good enough?
I think we'll eat it Friday night.
Oh, yes.